For the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
We welcome you, sir.
It's good to be here, ma'am. Let us pray. God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, God of yesterday, today, and tomorrow, you have long coveted to be with us throughout this life. We ask that you be with us this evening as we go about deciding business for this city that would be business, it would be uplifting and nurturing for all your children. Watch over all those who gather here that the decisions would be made guided by your wisdom, strengthened by your love. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Davey, thank you for coming down. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. You got the roll call?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a motion for the certification of the closed session? So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
Five of ten to zero. You have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion for recess.
Do I have a bid opening?
You do. It should be in your book.
Franchise for use of city right-of-way. Did not air. I told her to put it in there. Is it not in there? Sorry. She told me it was in there.
I'll be opening a bid for the franchise for use of city right-of-way. Correct?
I don't want to have it.
And this is to construct and install and maintain wireless communications and infrastructure.
Second, sorry.
All right. While you're looking for that, I'm going to open the public hearing for the non-exclusive franchise use of Cox Wireless Access LLC.
He's passing it to you. Thank you.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 15.5-2102, the Chair will now summarize the bids that have been received for proposed non-exclusive franchise use and occupy the city's streets and public roadways for the purpose of constructing, installing, and maintaining wireless communications, facilities, and infrastructure. One bid has been received as follows. Cox Wireless Access LLC has bid 10-year franchise term with three options to renew for five years each to install small cells on existing and new structures in the city's right-of-way. $1,000 one-time fee for each small cell attachment to a new pole or the wireless support structure right-of-way use fees established by Virginia law, whichever is greater. Are there any other persons desiring to submit a bid at this time? There being no further bids, the bidding is closed. City staff has evaluated the bid received by Cox Wireless Access LLC and recommends that the company be granted a non-exclusive franchise. We will now open a public hearing for the proposed franchise for use of cities right-of-way. So do you have any speakers for that?
No, sir.
How about, do you have any speakers for the exchange of city property at 5900 Drum Lane for Norfolk Airport Authority property?
No, Your Honor.
For 5833 Sandpit Road, adjacent lots in Burton Station neighborhood, 1.7 acre parcel, certain drainage rights for DHW joint venture LLC.
No, Your Honor.
Very good. We'll now go to the consent agenda, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval on the consent agenda under ordinances. Item K1, which is ordinance to amend city code section A 2-120, Ray extended six-leaf B 6 through 12, 7 through 1, 759, 759.1, 759.2, 759.3, 759.4, and 759.6. Ray, the definition of electric-powered utility cart and regulation for riding on the beach or boardwalk. Item 2, ordinance to grant a non-exclusive franchise to Cox Wireless Access LLC. Ray, install, maintain, and operate wireless facilities, communications, infrastructure within the public right-of-way, public streets and right-of-way. 3, ordinances to declare city property to be in excess. A 5900 Drum Lane authorized city manager to execute all disposition and exchange documents with Norfolk Airport Authority. And B 5833 Sandpit Road, three adjacent lots in the Burton Station neighborhood, 1.7 acre parcel, and certain drainage rights authorized city manager to execute all disposition and exchange documents with DHW joint venture LLC. Madam Clerk, please note that the mayor is abstaining on both 3A and B.
Yes, sir.
Item 4, which is a resolution to adopt the Virginia Cash Match Plan as a successor to the Sheriff's Supplemental Retirement Plan. And item 5, ordinance to appropriate $1 million to the Risk Management Internal Service Fund, Ray, insurance premiums, and self-insurance claims. Madam Clerk, please note that Councilman Moss is voting no on that item.
Yes, sir.
And item 6, which is ordinances to accept and appropriate A $3,000 from GEICO to the Police Department, Ray, the every 15 minutes program, and B $17,973 from the Virginia Department of EMS to Virginia Beach EMS, Ray, purchase of rescue equipment, medical supplies, and $8,006.82 from Tidewater EMS Regional Council to the Virginia Beach EMS, Ray, personal costs associated with Hampton Roads Metropolitan Medical Response System. So move, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Call for the question, please.
I would just like to explain by no vote. While I take no exception that there is a need to appropriate the $1 million, I do believe that the $1 million should have been transferred from the unexecution, under execution of various departments who are creating the risk and incurring the expenses rather than debiting the general fund surplus. And that's the reason why I voted no.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Counsel, we will now go to public comment. Before I go to public comment, I will read the following. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items at items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. And the reason I say that, obviously, we have a lot of speakers, and we welcome each and every one, but at the same time, we will, everyone will be required to go no longer than three minutes. And we'll go ahead and get started.
The first?
Wait, excuse me.
Sorry.
We ask the city attorney to take less than five minutes to talk about the three options that were out there before we begin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always potentially difficult to explain in a very short period of time such a complex issue, but I'm going to do my best to explain to you the options that were presented to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission's recommended alternative. As I said, there were three alternatives prepared by the staff. The first two alternatives made a distinction between what is defined as home sharing and what is separately defined as a short-term rental. A home share is essentially where a person maintains a property as their primary residence, and they are renting that property or rooms in that property while they are present in the home. That is home sharing. And under all three alternatives, home sharing would be allowed as a permitted use in the zoning classifications. Short-term rentals, by contrast, are rentals where it is not the primary residence of the property owner and where the property and/or where the property owner is not to be present during the rental. Under alternative 1, a CUP would be required for any short-term rental unless the rental was located in a short-term rental overlay district. In option 2, a conditional use permit would be required, except that it would not be required where all existing short-term rentals would be grandfathered. So if you had a short-term rental that had previously been registered with the Commissioner of the Revenue and had paid transient occupancy tax beyond the grandfathering date, which was proposed and could be changed, was initially proposed as January 1 of 2017, then no CUP would be required. Option 3 involved treating short-term rentals and home sharing the same, and those uses would have been permitted as an accessory use. With respect to all three of the alternatives, to the extent permitted by law, all properties would have to register with the Commissioner of the Revenue and would have to collect and remit the transient occupancy tax. There were also a list of conditions that applied in each circumstance. For example, parking. As originally proposed, it was an onsite minimum of two spaces, which was what is required for a short-term, is what is required for residential dwelling. Posting of city code requirements for such things as fireworks, for such things as trash collection, for such things as noise. The alternatives suggested that the full text of those specific code provisions be posted somewhere in the home so that the short-term renter would know the law, the most significant laws that bound them. Trash had to be placed in the automated bins. The recommendations that went to the Planning Commission called for a limit of one rental contract per seven days. It recommended, the alternatives all recommended, an insurance requirement of $1 million. And the point there was not just the insurance coverage amount, but it was designed so that the persons engaging this activity would know that their typical homeowner's insurance policy without an appropriate rider might not provide coverage for a rental activity, which is in fact a form of commercial activity. There were regulations regarding signage. There was a requirement that a contact person be identified to the city and that the contact person must be available to be at the property within 30 minutes of a call. There were special events requirements that applied where there was to be a gathering of over 50 people. There would be no more than 100 people permitted for any special event, and no more than three such special events per years, per year. Exit signs were required to be placed in the home and clearly marked, and there were requirements for inspection by the city with respect to ensuring that the requirements of the code were carried out. There was also, and this came out of the state law, there was, that says, it was passed last year that says upon three or more violations at the residence, the registration could be revoked. That was taken out of the state law. The Planning Commission considered each of the alternatives. I'm only going to speak with respect to their recommended alternative, which was alternative 3. Their alternative 3 made the use, it made no distinction between home sharing and short-term rentals, and it made the use a permitted use throughout the city. They also recommended changing some of the conditions. I'm going to mention just some of those. They changed one contract a year, a week to two contracts a week. They changed the insurance requirement from $1 million to $500,000. I forgot to mention the occupancy limitation. The recommendations had been from going to the Planning Commission were two per bedroom plus four. The Planning Commission's recommendation was three per bedroom plus two. And they took out the requirement for exit signs, and they imposed, instead of reasonable notice for inspections, they set after 24 hours. Again, I've tried to do this relatively quickly. I'm sure I've not hit everything, but that was, that was some of the highlights. I will note that there is legislation pending in the General Assembly. There was a Senate amendment to House Bill 824 that provides, and I quote, "That the city of Virginia Beach shall not require a conditional use permit, special exception, or special use permit for a dwelling unit used as a short-term rental." I, as I sit here right now, do not know the status of that amendment. I believe that there have been discussions regarding possibly making some changes to that text, but I am not prepared and don't have information that allows me to state what the status of that is at this time. I believe it's going to conference committee because the House did not accept the Senate amendment, and so there will be more discussion, and whatever comes out of the General Assembly could affect what this council has the ability to do under Dillon's rule.
Very good. Thank you for that quick snapshot. And to the speakers, please, so this is public comment, there will be no action taken this evening by the council. Call the speakers, please.
The first speaker is Vicky Wilson, and after Mrs. Wilson will be Joan Rose. Vicky Wilson.
Vicky Wilson. Okay, let's go to the next one.
Joan Rose. And after Mrs. Rose will be Donna Watson.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Joan Rose, and I live in Sandbridge. I support weekly rentals. I'm totally against creating an overlay because it would single out our community and treat it differently than everybody else in Sandbridge, in Virginia Beach. The weekly rentals companies have been spreading rumors that some of us who want these regulations want to get rid of weekly rentals. I don't know anybody in Sandbridge that's trying to get rid of weekly rentals. This has been voiced many times, and in order, I guess, to scare our neighbors and to, in attempt to sabotage our message, we only want to make sure that we have sound, common-sense ordinances that will protect the owners and the renters that we welcome back each year. It is our concern for their safety and the health of many of these regulations that they're very much needed. Our Sandbridge Civic League has not taken, has been taken over by the business community, and I believe does not represent any longer the owners and the second home owners. The only group that speaks for the owners in Sandbridge is the newly formed Protect Virginia Beach Neighborhoods, which is citywide. Sandbridge is approximately 1/3 owners that live there, 1/3 second homeowners, and then about 1/3 people that come to enjoy the beach, renters or investors. After studying all the proposals that the city council staff made, I think number two best covers what we need. It talks about common-sense proposals that will protect the owners that live there, the permanent residents, as well as the people that come to the beach to enjoy it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Donna Watson. And after Mrs. Watson, Bob Kugler.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council, my name is Donna Watson, and I represent Protect Virginia Beach Neighborhoods. We want to go on record as supporting short-term rentals, but they need to be properly regulated and controlled. Short-term rentals need to be made legal. Short-term rentals cannot be allowed to destabilize neighborhoods. It's regrettable that the local realty companies have caused so much distress and confusion by their misinformation and their doom-and-gloom propaganda that has scared their property owners to pieces. They've also misled our state representatives. We support alternative 2, as proposed by the city attorney and the city staff. We think you all were brilliant in doing this. Alternative 2 will grandfather, as Mr. Stiles said, all existing short-term rentals, so people currently renting for less than 30 days will continue to do so. Only new short-term rentals require a CUP. CUPs are a zoning tool that the city has successfully used for many, many years. Other cities use CUPs for STRs such as Buena Vista and Warren County. At the Planning Commission hearing on February 14th, Charlie Kelly, a Realtor from Seabright Realty, who also owns a short-term rental, said he makes $280,000 to $300,000 a year on a short-term rental. Surely, a one-time expense for a CUP is something he could easily afford to invest in a short-term rental. No matter how you recognize short-term rentals, health, safety, and welfare should be a priority. Couple of items I'd like to highlight. First of all, maximum occupancy limits. The city's proposal of two people per bedroom plus fours in keeping with many state and federal recommendations regarding safe maximum occupancy. Even Chip Dix, who represents the Virginia Realtors, said this in his testimony before the Senate Committee on General Laws and Technology. In his testimony, he cited the standard, industry standard of, quote, "Two persons per bedroom and other owner occupied in long-term rentals" in his discussions about Lexington. If the Virginia Realtors are advocating for two people per bedroom, why would we do something different? Do we want our visitors to feel like they're coming to someplace that isn't safe? Do we want our people to come back on vacation? Let's make sure it's safe for them. Some people claim we can't enforce maximum occupancy. While enforcement may only occur if there's a problem, it will give rental companies and property owners some idea of safety guidelines that they can use in advertising. It will also help the fire department and other emergency responders know how many people could be in a house. Also, we need emergency exit signs so that people can get out whenever there's a disaster. These people don't know the floor plans of the houses they're staying in. There should be only one rental contract in a seven-day period. That's a no-brainer. Who wants a bunch of strangers going in and out? And it's imperative that there be a contact person that can be called in case of emergency. Not talking about 911 stuff, I'm talking about other emergencies that come.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate you coming down.
All right, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Bob Kugler, and then Lorraine Jones.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Hi, Mayor, city council, women and men. First, I want to say thank you, because you guys put in a whole lot of time and effort. And I've lived here 18 years, and I appreciate what you've done, so thank you.
Thank you.
I've put forward 10 recommendations for things to include in the short-term rental and have provided that separately, and hopefully you have a copy. So I only want to highlight a few. First one is parking. There's always a question, how do you manage parking? I think the easiest way, instead of trying to do some overlay, is to say, allow one vehicle per bedroom to use the public street, and all other parking to be done on the land itself. I think it's easiest to enforce and yet would allow enough parking so that people can effectively use their short-term rental. Maintenance, I think you're going to cover otherwise, but we want to make sure that those places are safe and therefore make sure that they do have operational smoke detectors and fire alarms. The one that gets us is frequency. How often should you have it? Well, I would go with two per week. I think there should be an upper bound, and I think 40 in a year is quite reasonable. I live in a residential neighborhood. We're willing to put up with 40, but when you get much beyond that, you're becoming short-term rental all the time and not really a residential. From a standpoint of how large a group should be, we talked about special event permits. I believe that when you have more than 30 people in a house, you've already reached the point where it's getting a little bit out of hand unless you're very careful. So I would suggest that for more than 30, you use a special event permit. Finally, point of contact. I accept that 30 minutes is tough to meet, but I think an hour is reasonable rather than going 24 or longer. So I do believe you should have a special point of contact, and they should arrange for that person to be able to be there within 30, within 60 minutes. Excuse me. The rest are on the list. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker.
Lorraine Jones, and then Lawrence Horvath.
My name is Lorraine Jones. I'm here to request that you implement alternative number two, to manage rentals in residential communities, including, if not most importantly, Sandbridge. The city advertises Sandbridge as such. It is a relaxing and peaceful community where you can truly slow down and unwind on your vacation. This is indeed why vacationers come to Sandbridge. In other words, our city is unique. It has great and distinctly different places for vacationers to go, special designations, Sandbridge being one of them. Going forward, unless appropriate regulations are put in place, Sandbridge cannot and will not remain the relaxing and peaceful community we advertise it to be. Two examples of needed regulations are that management companies monitor the parking of vehicles by those using the rental property. At the present time, it is the nearby residents who have to handle the problems brought by illegal parking on our narrow streets. Management companies be required to respond to calls of concern in a timely manner, and you've heard that, it's a big one. If they would simply include what the Commissioner of Revenue is directed to do, he says, "A person or agent designated to respond to calls or complaints received by the city's 311 service must be on hand, and agents should be ready to respond to such calls by providing in-person assistance and remediation within 30 minutes of such call for service." Things have changed. Errors have been made by the city in recent years, and we all know that. That is why we're here today. The elephant in the room is, what are you going to do about it? Cover it up with an overlay or protect our residential community from further problems? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Lawrence Horvath, and then Dale Young.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
I'm Larry Horvath. I've been asked by my neighbors in Bay Lake Pines to tell you why we don't want these things in our neighborhood. When a house is converted to a short-term rental, and we've witnessed this now in our neighborhood a couple of times, the flower beds aren't maintained, the, you don't see things, you don't see the curtains closing at night. In bad cases, you see parties going on until 3:00 AM in the morning. And in short, it turns our neighborhood into not what we bought into. It makes it something that we don't want to be in. It makes us having to live among strangers. We don't want this. And I've seen what this happens, what happens in cities all over the country and in the world. My wife and I have used Airbnb and bookings.com in England, in Cambridge. The owner asked us not to make ourselves conspicuous in front of her neighbors. In New York City, the young banker that we rented an apartment from said, "Tell everybody, my neighbors, that you're relatives." And, let's see, in Dupont Circle, a nice neighborhood west of Dupont Circle, it used to be all beautiful townhomes with, you know, people living in them. They have since been subdivided into apartments that are leasing out as short-term rentals, and there's nobody living in there. It's a frightening place, dark and empty at night. We don't want this to happen to our neighborhoods, so we're asking that you do something to protect us. I, for God's, you know, for God's sakes, I don't think any of you want one of these across the street or next to your house, so why would you not protect the rest of us? You've got the power to do that. Young people think this is trendy, and they, it seems like a new thing, and I got to tell you, like, many young things, or many things that young people like, they ain't that good. And I've talked, I talked to a woman from WDEC after the last session, and she, I asked her, I said, "Would you, would you use a short-term rental?" And she said to me, "Only if I had a large group with me. I wouldn't take one by myself." So this is not a good thing. It's not something exciting and trendy. I've talked to my friends in the North Beach, and they weren't aware that at the Planning Commission, somebody said that they don't, we want conditional use permits anymore. They didn't even know this was happening. They thought the city would protect them. They were at first shocked, and then they were outraged when I explained to them what's going on. So word is getting out. The owners... The owners and operators that are probably two-thirds of this room, they don't represent the majority of the voters here. The word is getting out. So, protect us. Require the conditional use permits, for God's sake. It's the only way where the neighborhoods can weigh in.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Appreciate you coming down.
Thanks.
Next speaker, please.
Dale Young, and after Mr. Young is Cheryl Petticrew.
We welcome you tonight.
Hi, how are you?
Fine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good. My name is Dale Young, and I'm not a Realtor. I'm not an investor. I am, however, a resident and homeowner from Bay Lake Pines, and I'm a voter, a very active voter. In the Virginia Pilot, my letter to the editor was published last Monday, and I'd like to continue to question why this city council is allowing the state to cherry-pick and micromanage city affairs by not questioning the amendment added to Bill HB 824 that dealt with issues in the city of Lexington. That's Lexington, not Virginia Beach. This amendment added, without any public discussion or input, prohibits Virginia Beach and only Virginia Beach from requiring conditional use permits for short-term rentals. Why was this amendment added by Senator Bill Distef at the request of Delegate Barry Knight, put on at the end of a bill designed for Lexington? Now, let's follow the bill and its amendment and see if you can see why so many voters are questioning this action. HB 824 passed the House of Delegates with items that refer just to the city of Lexington. There was no mention of conditional use permits. It then went to a Senate Committee dealing with rules where the amendment was added by State Senator Bill Distef at the request of Delegate Barry Knight. The committee approved it and then passed it on to the Senate without any public input. Because it differed from what had been passed, the amendment HB 824 had to go back to the House of Delegates for a vote. It was voted down ninety-nine to zero with Delegate Barry Knight voting against it this time. This process can start again if there's interest. Well, there's interest. We found out today. We just found out that Airbnb has been actively lobbying to get some type of legislation that would make it easy for an investor to turn a home into a short-term rental. They have indicated that they could help collect and distribute state and local taxes if hurdles like requiring conditional use permits were eliminated at the state level. So, questions come up. First of all, why, if, questions if we're allowed to have some input, I should say. If this is true, then why is it just Virginia Beach listed on the amendment and not the entire state? We'd like to know that. If so, are all social media, short-term rental services on board with this collection of taxes? These should all be things that are addressed before a decision is made. How much interest does a social media service have in maintaining the neighborhood vibe of our communities? How much responsibilities do these social media services have in regulating visitors on this site? Are they here? Are they looking to see what happens? And the major question is, why are you, the city council, not questioning this procedure? It's being done at the state level, and you're being dictated, you're being told what to do. It seems to many of the voters in the entire city that members of its city council are trying to get out of having to make a decision that's going to prove to be highly unpopular at election time. You should be on record for making this decision and not trying to shirk your duty.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Cheryl Petticrew, and then Susan Sadowski.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council and staff. My name is Cheryl Petticrew. I have lived in the residential beach community of Sandbridge for over forty years. I support short-term rentals with regulations as well as alternative two. I believe the health, safety, and welfare of our residential neighborhoods in Virginia Beach has been overlooked in public hearings, workshops, and discussions over the past two and a half years. Renters pay to use another's property instead of their own to do what they might not do in their own neighborhood but come to another neighborhood to do. That reminds me of the Short-Term Rental Ad-Hoc Committee and their frequent discussions on accountability. Another word is responsibility, and every property owner and their agent has a responsibility to the community. I hope that the 311 city number will be a start on contacting the responsible party when problems arise. I only have to remind you of the April 2016 college weekend shooting fatality that occurred of an ODU student by the name of Darren Campbell in an Oceania Gardens Airbnb. A party got out of hand, and perhaps you may remember, the property owner lived in China, and there was no property manager. And on a personal note, I want to show you this poster. I've contacted each and every one of you about the proposed party that almost happened next door to me in Sandbridge in a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot house that advertised ticket sales, kegs of beer, and amplified music next to my home on February sixteenth, 2018. This flyer is reality. The aforementioned shooting death is reality. This is what will occur without proper regulations. Please help us to be proactive in our Virginia Beach neighborhoods rather than continuing to be reactive. To quote the Virginia Beach Comp Plan of 2016, "A key indicator of every successful city is how well it safeguards the health and quality of its housing and its neighborhoods." Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone want to see this again?
Next speaker, please.
Susan Sadowski.
We welcome you tonight.
Rusty Carlock.
Thank you. My name is Susan Sadowski, and I've lived in Sandbridge for twenty-eight years. I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and to share some of my thoughts on short-term rentals with you all. First of all, I adamantly oppose any and all efforts to make Sandbridge an overlay district. Sandbridge has been and is currently a residential neighborhood that has a significant number of short-term rentals. It has been a very successful arrangement to date. To further this point, I will share a quote from the city's comprehensive plan, the city's vision, if you will. "The Sandbridge community is a stable, low-density, single-family community with about twelve-hundred dwelling units. Most of the dwellings are rented to visitors who prefer a slower, quieter atmosphere than that experienced at the oceanfront area." What I'm going to say to you now is that no one, no one that I'm aware of, is advocating that short-term rentals go away. No one. I like short-term renters. I see them out walking, biking. I sit with them at the beach. I watch their children play in the surf, just like mine did. I play bingo with them at the fire station. The problem before us is not short-term rentals. It's bad behavior. City staff came up with several very good recommendations to deal with this bad behavior. However, the Planning Commission watered most of them down, and no one seems to be willing to step up and enforce them. I wish to discuss just one of those recommendations now, one rental per week. Whether it's one day or one week, that's fifty-two rentals a year for someone like me and my neighbors to live next to. This is already a compromise from having only seven-day rentals as originally proposed by the Ad-Hoc Committee. To allow more than one rental per week would push the fifty-two rentals a year to upwards of a hundred and four rentals a year. That is too much neighborhood disruption. I am quite confident that none of you would be okay with a hundred and four short-term rentals a year next to your house in your neighborhood. This gets to the heart of what is driving the issue. It's money. Well, it can't and it shouldn't always be about money. At certain points, it has to also be about quality of life, quality of life for the residents and the short-term rentals. If we don't get a handle on this now, it will eventually be the end of the goose that lays the golden eggs.
Thank you very much.
Everyone loses.
I appreciate you coming down tonight. Next speaker, please.
Rusty Carlock. And then Mary Elizabeth Connor.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Russell Carlock. I'm a resident of Bay Lake Pines. I've lived in Virginia Beach for over thirty years. I was actually born in Hampton Roads. I do not support short-term rentals in our neighborhood. However, if the council does approve short-term rentals in an R-ten zoned, single-family neighborhood, I believe they should be regulated. They should require a conditional use permit. They should limit the amount of rentals to one a week. They should require one off-street parking area per bedroom. They should allow no more than two people in each bedroom and have one point of contact that you can get in touch with twenty-four hours a day. I believe this is a question of our residents trying to preserve the quality of life in the neighborhood they've worked long and hard to create versus those who wish to maximize profit that they can make in the neighborhood while minimizing the level of responsibility for the actions of the renters that they bring in. I believe our homeowners should have more say in what happens in our neighborhood than the absentee renters or owners, the renters that they bring in and the profit from the renters that they make. On the subject of conditional use permits, I went on fine today and looked in your zoning regulations, and it requires a conditional use permit for something as simple as doing accounting and taking care of somebody's taxes. There's ladies who've applied for conditional use permit for having three or four kids in their house. There's somebody who's rehabbing squirrels and possums down at the beach who had to get one. So, if you're going to allow Bay Lake Pines, which is zoned R-ten, single-family, to now become a place where you have commercial enterprises taking place in that single-family neighborhood at a minimum, I think you should require a conditional use permit. The people who profit from this activity should be held responsible for what happens on their property and for the actions of their renters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mary Elizabeth Connor. And after Mrs. Connor will be Jack Beckett.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Rose Jones, and the members of City Council. My name is Mary Elizabeth Connor. I live in Bay Lake Pines neighborhood. We moved to Virginia Beach in nineteen-sixty-eight and have lived there for the last fifty years. We bought in a neighborhood that would offer a safe, friendly environment and a place where our children could enjoy growing up. Why would the city of Virginia Beach care so little about its residents that they would consider allowing many hotels in neighborhoods with an R-ten zoning? Zonings are created to set standards for areas, what can and cannot be built, type of residence, or business that can be in that zoning. The city of Virginia Beach should honor these zonings and not allow businesses to encroach into them. Families buy in neighborhoods to raise families. Families need safety. To allow STRs in neighborhoods that are zoned as residential is dangerous and is very short-sighted in the city of Virginia Beach. It will destroy the community within that neighborhood. How would you feel if you had a constant stream of strangers moving in and out of the house next door, not caring a bit about how they acted, what they said, what they did, how they treated the property and/or your neighborhood? Would your family feel safe? Any business, which is what this is, because the city taxes STRs with a transient lodging tax, requires a conditional use permit if it is not in an area zoned for business. Is this short-term rental business any different? I think not. STRs do not belong in non-resort neighborhoods. We don't want STRs in Bay Lake Pines. It is a family neighborhood. Let family neighborhoods stay that way. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Jack Beckett. Sorry.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Sessoms and Councilmembers. My name is Jack Fecety, and I'm fourteen years old and have lived in Sandbridge my entire life. My sister and I attend the Brickell Academy at Old Donation School. Next year, I will be attending the Legal Studies Academy at First Colonial High School. My parents rented out our home during the summer months and holidays. Do I like leaving my home? No, not at all. Do I like that my parents have the opportunity to do so in order to provide for my sister and me? Yes. That rental money helps feed us, clothe us, and provide for our education. Renting our homes also means that they can operate a small business with flexible hours so that they can be there to support and raise us. I might be only fourteen, but this much I know. Families have been renting homes on a short-term basis in Sandbridge for over sixty-five years. Why? Because Sandbridge is a five-mile stretch of public beach with self-funded sand replenishment. There are two national parks, Little Island Park with a public beach, picnic area, and playground, over a thousand public parking spaces, three public restrooms, a fishing pier, three campgrounds, Sandbridge Fire and Rescue, two churches, a market and shops, restaurants, et cetera. All of that in just a five-mile stretch. And on top of all that, the city pays hundreds of thousands of dollars on ad campaigns, not just Virginia Beach as a tourist destination, but Sandbridge specifically. Is that a normal residential neighborhood? Absolutely not. That's why the renters come. And because they come, the city benefits from an annual tax revenue of twenty-four million dollars. Is this a normal neighborhood? No. It's an extraordinary neighborhood. It's my neighborhood, and I think I'm growing up fine just the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, thank you for that support of the young man, but let's keep it down so we can get through the speakers, please. Let's be fair to each other. Next speaker, please.
Elaine Beckett. And then Christian Benz.
We welcome you tonight. You're welcome. Yeah, I wouldn't want to be that one.
All right. Good evening. My name is Elaine Fecety. Twenty-three years ago, when I relocated back to the Tidewater area, I wanted to run a house in Sandbridge for a few weeks to get my bearings. I opened up a good old-fashioned newspaper, found one of those good old-fashioned classified ads, found a home for rent by owner, called them, rented the home. A few weeks later, my husband and I bought that home. The realty company provided the obligatory notice regarding jet noise and said, "There are a few short-term rentals around you." We thought, duh, it's a public beach. Tourists are coming, of course, through short-term rentals in Sandbridge. So, we chose to stay. It's where we're still living, and we're now raising our children. Like many other families in Sandbridge, we now rent our primary residents out during the summer, holidays, and weekends to make ends meet. This current debate over short-term rentals started as a way to regulate the event homes, the event homes that the city approved. I heard it said in your workshop that Sandbridge homes were zoned for single-family principal use dwellings. Who in zoning really thought a fifteen-bedroom home was going to be a single-family dwelling? And who in zoning, planning, or even council thought that the building of three-hundred-and-thirty-eight condos was going to result in three-hundred-and-thirty-eight families moving into Sandbridge the next week? I heard my council representative say last week that she was not aware of three-day rentals until two years ago. Seriously. To clarify, my three-day rentals do not represent the end of civilization. They provide lodging for those visitors we are luring to the city, to the sportsplex, the convention center, the marathons. They provide a place for families who are traveling to wrestling matches and soccer tournaments. Those are not seven-day events. Our three-day rentals provide housing for military families who are coming into town to see loved ones and all want to stay under the same roof. My neighbors love to tell me that my three-day rentals are usually quieter and nicer than I am. But speaking of neighbors, are you really comfortable drawing a distinction between those of us who live in Sandbridge nine months of the year versus twelve months of the year? As written, the proposed ordinances would apply to me as a resident simply because I rent my home in the summer. So, if I have Thanksgiving dinner at my home and my family exceeds the maximum occupancy, and Uncle Buster won't go home before eleven o'clock, then I'm in violation and could lose my ability to rent. What I'm asking you tonight, and imploring you even, when you look into these little ordinances, being requested by a few, please use logic and reasoning and common sense approaches that are quantifiable and enforceable for all. Please don't punish the many for the possibility of the sins of a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Christian Benz. And then Joan Davis.
We welcome you tonight. Good evening.
Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, and Councilman, thank you for your time. My name is Christine Benz, and I'm speaking opposition to short-term rentals. I'm a resident of more than thirty years of Bay Lake Pines, a quiet, friendly neighborhood that we chose in order to raise our family. After attending the Planning Commission public comment... After attending the Planning Commission Public Comment Session, it was apparent to me that this is a very complicated issue. What fits the Sandbridge area does not fit with all of the many neighborhoods in Virginia Beach. A neighborhood, in a neighborhood, residents build relationships and develop a sense of security and incentives to maintain and improve their homes and the surrounding areas. Imagine how you would feel if the house next to you or across the street became a house full of strangers every week. Short-term rentals, allowing short-term rentals into established neighborhoods is a direct threat to our investment, both in dollars and emotionally. Imagine two identical houses for sale, side by side. One of them has, is a short-term rental, has a short-term rental next to it. Which one are you going to pick if you're intending to live there and raise a family? I think that we're rushing to a decision that will make both sides unhappy, and more time is needed to find a solution that better fits the resort areas of our, and our neighborhoods. We have apples and oranges, not apples and apples. It is my understanding, and I've heard it again this evening, that Senator DeStef got the state involved in Virginia Beach's business. I commend Mrs. Henley and Mr. Jones for their efforts to resolve or restore some sanity into this situation. I implore you to please take the time to find a plan that does not infringe on the rights of any registered voting citizens. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Joan Davis.
We welcome you tonight.
And after Mrs. Davis is Lynda Johnson.
We welcome you.
Good evening, Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, members of City Council, City Manager, Mr. Hanson, and City Attorney, Mr. Stiles. My name is Joan Davis, and I can't see anything. And I (laugh) got glasses on. I'm a 43-year resident of Sandbridge, past president of the Sandbridge Beach Civic League, a 30-year city volunteer paramedic, and current president of the Sandbridge Volunteer Rescue Squad. I also serve as one of your appointed commissioners for the city's Parks and Rec Commission. I believe in a responsible government and work hard in giving back to our community. Sandbridge has been an outpost for summer vacationers for over 60 years. Over time, we have worked hard to be a top family vacation destination, which in turn supports our community and local economy. And as you just heard earlier, we pay for our own sand replenishment. Out of approximately 1,700 homes, we have about 480 full-time families who are blessed to call this unique beach community their home. Speaking of one of these full-time families, we welcome our annual visitors and open arms and smiles. The three-year ordeal began with homes that were used for events in Sandbridge that were unsanctioned. With a lot of community input, solutions, and procedures that were voluntarily put in place, the Sandbridge Beach Civic League and the Business Owners Association made this possible, according to Captain Squires of the First Precinct. Complaints over the last years have been almost nonexistent. This community is, this is community involvement at its finest. However, along the path, other concerns with other neighborhoods surfaced, which is why we are still here today. One thing I believe you've heard from the Planning Commission is there is not one size that fits all. Sandbridge is different and has successfully managed their short-term rentals. We are a crown jewel for the city of Virginia Beach. In conclusion, every day when I get up and watch the news, there are stories all over the news. There's lewd and mischievous behavior. Some might have you believe it's caused by STRs, but I don't believe that at all. With over 20 public meetings and two board recommendations, I've concluded that, to coin a medical phrase, there is not just one shot or antibiotic that can cure all these STRs. So, and at this time, I'd like for everybody that's in favor of short-term rentals to please stand up.
Thank you.
Y'all have any questions or anything for me?
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Lynda Johnson.
Lynda Johnson.
And then after Mrs. Johnson, it will be Bill McCauley.
Well, we welcome you from the great city of Suffolk to the grayest city in the world, Virginia Beach.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, council members, Mr. Hanson, or City Attorney. Thank you all. I'm Lynda Johnson, and I have a home at 2816 Sandpiper Road in Sandbridge. It is the second home that has been in my family since 1978, and it is a year-round home for us as we enjoy it. Therefore, no, I am not a voter in Virginia Beach, as I have been told, but I am a homeowner and a taxpayer. And while we have heard much about not wanting homes rented, I stand before you to tell you, I have no problem with homes being rented. I never have, I never will. And I do not believe that the opposition that you're hearing to this is really about the short-term rental. In the last 10 years, we have seen a proliferation of event homes, large homes advertised for groups of 50, even more. But they were built under a zoning of residential. And therefore, I say to you, they were not built as structures for the numbers of people that they are housing. I have heard it said from one council member that a special overlay district proposed for Sandbridge would be a de facto rezoning. But that was okay because the zoning was never really enforced. I have to tell you, I think that is a poor argument, and the building permits state single-family residence. While I don't have an answer for you all this evening, and I do not, I don't want to sit in any of your chairs, I know that's a difficult place to sit, but there are a couple of things I just want to leave you with. You are responsible for the health, the safety, and the welfare of all of the people. The owners, the renters, the beachgoers for the day, all of them. And I ask you to look at the infrastructure that's in Sandbridge. You should not create rules for special groups or for one community. All of your citizens deserve the very same equal protection. That's all we ask. That's all we want. You have to know that if you're talking about a de facto rezoning, a rezoning, a special overlay district, you all know, it takes a process. It takes a lot. And we look forward to all that community input. I did see an email this evening from Delegate Knight that said a special district overlay for Sandbridge was what most homeowners want. And I request by FOIA the date, the time, and the results of any such data collected that shows that conclusion, because I did not get my inquiry. And I ask you to resist making decisions based on fear. And I think we need to look at the facts. Everyone can come together on this. There is no need for all of this. Pitting neighbors against neighbors does not help. And I thank you for the hard work you have ahead.
Lynda, thank you for coming. Nice to see you. Take care. Next speaker, please.
Bill McCauley. And after Mr. McCauley is Molly Brown.
Bill, it's nice to see you back.
Today, I represent the Sandbridge Beach Business Association, and this is our position. Any ordinance adopted by the City Council should allow, as a principle or by right use, short-term rentals within the area encompassed by the Sandbridge Special Service District. We agree, however, that as we have from the beginning, that there should be reasonable regulations concerning matters of the public health, safety, and welfare in such an ordinance, like appear in the Planning Commission's version of the ordinance that it recommended. We hasten to add that the association is only concerned with what action the city takes with regard to STRs in Sandbridge. We don't feel it appropriate to advocate for one particular course of action that affects, for instance, Bay Lake Pines. We're not Bay Lake Pines, we are Sandbridge, and we are different. One of the reasons that we are different is that any ordinance that allowed STRs by right in Sandbridge would do nothing more than to formally acknowledge the legality of an activity that for many years the city has not only allowed, but has actively encouraged in its tourism efforts, and from which it's received many millions of dollars in revenue from not just the transient occupancy tax, but also from real estate property taxes on the added value brought to Sandbridge residences by virtue of their potential to be used as vacation rentals. I should mention as well, I think it's noteworthy that of the three commissions appointed by the City Council to study this issue, the Beaches and Waterways Advisory Commission, the later ad hoc committee in the Planning Commission, not one single recommendation has been put forth by any of those committees to the effect that conditional use permits be required. Sandbridge is also different because STRs comprise about 46% of the total number of residential units in Sandbridge. That percentage is increasing as a result of the area's obvious and growing popularity among visitors to Virginia Beach, not least because of the city's own advertising, Sandbridge has a great place to visit, which it is. About 95% of the 871 STRs there are managed by professionals licensed by the Virginia Real Estate Board. Those properties have proven far less likely to be problematic than STRs that are not professionally I hasten to add that the association did not seek the introduction of House Bill, the provisions of House Bill 824 that apply to Virginia Beach. But in the latest version, which states that the city shall allow, as principle, permitted uses in Sandbridge, STRs pursuant to...
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Appreciate it, Bill.
I do have the remainder of these comments in a paper I'd just like to go ahead and present.
Thank you very much. Give the clerk. Next speaker, please.
Molly Brown. And after Mrs. Brown, it'll be Jimmy Frost.
We welcome you tonight.
Good night. Good evening. My name is Molly Brown, and I'm here on behalf of Friends of Back Bay. It is hard to believe that I stood before City Council in the late 80s to dispel rumors and bad information about the Back Bay National Wildlife Refuge expansion. Today, I'm here to refute many of the same people on the issue of short-term rentals. Their scare tactics frighten people. They said that the refuge expansion would be the gloom and doom of Sandbridge. A paid consultant from California came in and told the residents that the Fish and Wildlife Service would take and burn all the houses in Sandbridge. Thank goodness, the refuge expansion rose above the rumors. Through the lobbying efforts of Friends of Back Bay, over many years, Congress appropriated $24 million for the refuge expansion to buy land from willing sellers. Also, our opponent now advertises that the Back Bay National Wildlife Refuge as an amenity for their renters. Fast forward today, some of the same opponents are using the same scare tactics. Conditional use permits will be the gloom and doom of Sandbridge. Our opponents are now predicting a residential collapse. They say rental properties will be depressed and a conditional use permit is required. Now they are predicting that you, the city, will be taking the houses in Sandbridge. I support Alternative Two, which requires a conditional use permit for new short-term rentals, and all existing short-term rentals will be grandfathered. Also enact enforceable regulations that will make the owner accountable. These measures will protect the health and safety of residents and renters in all Virginia Beach's neighborhoods. Please rise above the rumors and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jimmy Frost. And after Mr. Frost, it's Mary Gravindus.
Thanks, Mrs. Mayor. I was seeing your mom at the Cavalier the other day. How's Norman doing?
Doing great.
Okay. You know, there's a reason I don't go jogging. And the reason is, as any policeman will tell you, is because it's usually a jogger that finds the body, which starts a murder investigation, which actually ironically is how we ended up here. Somebody got killed. I don't have a problem with short-term rentals in Sandbridge because they are in Sandbridge. I would not like to see them in my neighborhood because if two parking spaces is the requirement in Washington Square, we can't help you. We are fighting over parking now. I understand that people want to rent their houses out or a room and make a little extra money. I can certainly appreciate that. But I certainly wouldn't want a stranger in my house, but that's a choice that they have to make for themselves. I would simply point to, you can look on the Internet and find all kinds of cases where short-term rentals have been used to further crimes, they have been used to run prostitution rings, they have even been used to run meth labs, which have to be cleaned up. And I think Mr. Bailey here in the audience with the fire department can tell you, when they blow up, they make quite a mess. I think that we can come to an amiable, amenable solution here. I do like proposal two, because I think that if you are going to have this outside of an area where it's usually accepted, such as Sandbridge or the oceanfront, that neighborhoods and the people who live in them, like my neighbors, deserve every opportunity to have some kind of recourse when a short-term rental goes sideways. Many, I'm sure, are very good, and they don't have a problem, and then they're the ones who are complete 180, and that's when I'm going to come and pound on your door at 2:00 in the morning. Because I don't want those problems in my neighborhood. I don't think anybody wants those problems in their neighborhood. But they do exist, and they have to be dealt with. And I just don't want to see 12 police cars out in front of my house because somebody got sideways because of a weekend party. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Coming down.
Mary Gravindus. Thank you, sorry.
We welcome you tonight.
And then John Borum.
My name is Mary Gravindus, and my husband and I are residents of Sandbridge for 35 years, and for the record, we have never been against short-term rentals. I do not support an overlay in Sandbridge. Sandbridge should not be singled out when short-term rentals are proliferating throughout Virginia Beach. It is important to point out that Phil Kellum's office reported there are more short-term rentals in the North End, 41.8%, than there are in Sandbridge, 36.8%. So why is Sandbridge singled out for a possible overlay? My primary concern is the need for regulations. It is for everyone's benefit to pass alternatives that address the problems directly, such as Alternative Two, which I support, is based upon two and a half years of citywide meetings and public hearings and written by the city staff and attorney's office. Alternative Two is specific to all concerns we face in short-term rentals and provides for solutions. The city's original 14 regulations is a good start, but was watered down by the current Planning Commission. Misunderstandings, misinformation utilized by the realtors and special interests does not produce solutions in public policy. This misinformation is in the form of scare tactics, letters, realtors' manifestations, billboards, video streams, and civic league meetings promoting a culture of fear, intimidation, and personal attacks. Examples of this fear recently posted was prediction that people's lives would be at stake, property values will decline, and that half the houses will go in foreclosure. And people are sweating bullets. Other realtors reported it would be catastrophic to have conditional use permits and property rights taken away from them. In addition, it will take 10 years for the city to process their permits. The list goes on and on. The realtors fail to say that existing regulations, short-term rentals, are grandfather 99% and use as conditional use permits for future short-term rentals. The point I am making is public policy should not be based on misinformation, scare tactics, and financial gain. It is offensive when I hear elected officials say that residents knew what they were getting into in purchasing a home in Sandbridge. If potential buyers knew they were going to live next door to a mini hotel, Mega House Hotel, who in their right minds would invest their life savings to live in Sandbridge, the realtors and their supporters have to understand that the residents have rights and feel violated by the city's lack of zoning enforcement. Regulations would only enhance our properties and encourage potential buyers to purchase homes in Sandbridge. Tourism will also increase, and it will provide the protection necessary for families and vacationers to go exist. I just want to thank y'all for three years that we've been doing this, and all we want is the same thing, to live in our homes peacefully and protect our investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
John Borum. And then Darryl McCown.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilpeople. My name is John Borum. I live in 4221 Sandy Bay Drive, which is in the Bay Lake Pines community. It is a residential community. I'm a longtime resident. I've been there for 40 years in the city of Virginia Beach. I'm a taxpayer and a registered voter. I'm here tonight to speak against short-term rentals in my neighborhood. I'm not Sandbridge, I'm going to say I'm Bay Lake Pines. It's a different animal. By allowing these businesses to expand into neighborhoods such as mine that are specifically designed for individuals to build families, to raise their children, and to build a community where neighbors become lifelong friends... where neighbors become lifelong friends and extended families, not weekend acquaintances. If you allow these businesses to grow in my community of Bay Lake Pines, it will destroy the true meaning of family neighborhoods. And if you do it without strict code enforcements, such as occupancy limits, parking restrictions, and requirements, restrictions on the number of rentals in a period, a short period of time, and most importantly, without applying for a conditional use permit, you will in fact be part of the reason that it happens in my neighborhood, the destruction of the family. I'm asking you, as a parent, a citizen of Virginia Beach, and as a voter, to consider what could happen if you let these businesses in quiet family neighborhoods. Again, we're not Sandbridge. We're an R-ten residential, single-family housing community. And we do not want them at all in our neighborhood. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Darryl McCown. And then Barbara Ermrich.
We welcome you, sir.
Ermrich, I'm sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen. Hi, I'm Darryl McCown. My wife and I have lived in Bay Lake Pines for the past nineteen years. It's a wonderful neighborhood, but I can assure you that we would probably have never bought a home there if we had known that one day we would be faced with the possibility of having a short-term rental next door. Let's be honest with each other. No one really wants to live next door to a small motel or hotel. We prefer neighbors living next door to us, not strangers who are there all too often to party. There are already a couple of short-term rentals in our neighborhood, and it has not been a good experience for anyone. Lots of loud music, shouting, cursing, trash lawns, cars parked on lawns, et cetera. Plus, the homes themselves are not being maintained very well. For most of us, our homes represent the largest financial investment of our lifetimes, and we want this investment to grow, not decline. It's difficult to imagine how short-term rentals would enhance our property values. So it is our hope that you will rule against short-term rentals altogether in Bay Lake Pines. If they are allowed, we would ask that you, that they be seriously regulated by conditional use permits. These have been required for other commercial businesses in residential neighborhoods for many years. Not requiring them would be a break in precedent. Short-term rental owners and/or their representatives should be available twenty-four-seven by phone within approximately three minutes to address complaints. There should be penalties enforceable by the city if complaints are not resolved promptly. Impose occupancy limits. We recommend a maximum of two per bedroom and require onsite parking for a minimum of one car per bedroom. We sincerely hope these requests you find reasonable, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Barbara Ermrich. And then Matthew Toller.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening. Having lived happily in Virginia Beach and in Bay Lake Pines for forty-three years now, I have seen our city double in size. During that time, I have also seen the vital importance of people in our community working together, helping each other, dealing with the problems we face, and reaching reasonable compromises to benefit our city and our citizens. Our constitution guarantees us the right to pursue happiness, and studies have shown time and time again that happiness comes from one vital key of living in a neighborhood where people are connected with a strong sense of community. These neighborhoods have proven to be a vital catalyst for volunteering and working together to maintain a strong, vibrant city that is so essential in attracting new businesses. Neighborhoods like Bay Lake Pines with caring, compassionate, involved, hard-working, tax-paying voters are critical to the foundation of this city. And we seek reasonable compromises in regard to short-term rentals. Compromises such as owners and operators required to provide supervision, just like hotels, with the owners, our owners' representatives, available twenty-four hours a day, every day. No more than two persons per bedroom. On-site parking for at least one car per bedroom. No more than one rental per week. Conditional use permits required for all new short-term rentals. If I want to have a business in my home, I am going to be required to have a conditional use permit. So why should not a short-term rental functioning like a hotel not be required to have a conditional use permit? The city already recognizes that short-term rentals are businesses since they are subject to the transient occupancy tax, just like hotels. I strongly believe that each and every one of you greatly, deeply values your close-knit, caring, connected, safe neighborhood with its strong sense of community. And if you are truly honest about that, you must acknowledge the importance of a reasonable compromise in regards to short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Matthew Toller. And then Andrew Roper.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening. My name is Matt Toller, and my wife Katie and I have been working in the vacation rental industry for many years. Each summer, we look forward to seeing our guests coming back to the beach, many of whom have grown up staying in our homes. Over the last several months, we've spoken with many of our guests who are concerned that the homes that they have been staying in are at risk of being shut down. I've brought one of the letters that someone sent to me to read tonight. I've been vacationing in Virginia Beach since I was three years old. My father worked there in the hotels as a young man in the nineteen thirties. His father vacationed there with his parents as a young boy. In the nineteen sixties, we stayed in guesthouses. Later on, my grandmother began renting a house on Forty-Sixth Street. It was more economical, and it could accommodate members of our immediate and extended family. In nineteen ninety-nine, we learned that our son had muscular dystrophy. For the next ten years or so, we continued to vacation there for two weeks at a time. Unfortunately, as our son grew older, it became difficult to take care of him in a house not equipped to accommodate the handicap. We were thrilled when we found a property in Croatan that we've been renting now for the last seven years. It was built specifically to welcome disabled visitors looking for a place they could feel comfortable on vacation. This house has been a blessing to our family in more ways than I can describe. My children are the fifth generation of my family to vacation here, and we have never held a party. We have never been drunk or disorderly. We have always enjoyed saying hello to people on the beach and have always been polite and courteous to them. We have always kept our house cleaner than when we found it. Please don't let a few bad renters ruin it for the good people that love and respect the beach and the properties we rent as much as any resident. Jim Morrison, a longtime guest. Long before my wife and I came to work in this family business, our company, Anchor Realty, was serving this community. We believe that local vacation rental properties like ours should work directly alongside online rental platforms, owners, guests, and neighbors to ensure properties are in compliance and vacationing guests like Mr. Morrison are able to continue to come back year after year. I firmly believe Mr. Morrison is the majority of renters that come to our city respectfully to enjoy all it has to offer. For the violators, enforcement is key. Violations by occupants of STRs should be subject to immediate removal from a property by an owner, property manager, or law enforcement. If they do not comply with the lease and local regulations already in place, owners and property managers need help enforcing regulations already in place. We'd like to work the city to ensure the laws being passed are enforceable and avoid unnecessary regulations. We offer our years of experiences, the good, the bad, and a few ugly, to help in any way we can. We love this community and the work we do. Thank you all for all you do to make our community the best place to vacation and raise a family.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Andrew Roper. And after Mr. Roper is Marius Vassalou.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Honorable members of the City Council, city staff. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Andrew Roper. I'm the current president of the Sandbridge Beach Civic League, and I have a very brief statement to make on this matter. The Sandbridge Beach Civic League, Board of Directors, supports short-term rentals in the Sandbridge community as established for over sixty-five years. We further oppose the imposition of any new regulations now being proposed by the city of Virginia Beach that would change the status of short-term rentals in Sandbridge because of the potential negative impact on our commuting and supporting businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Marius Vassalou. And then Cynthia Vassalou.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I would like to register my passionate advocacy of alternative number four, which is to do nothing. I think- I mean, I feel as if I'm on another planet. I'm hearing people describing short-term rentals turning Virginia Beach into Mogadishu. I'm not seeing it. I'm seeing a great community. I'm seeing a community that occasionally has problems. I don't see that any of it has to do with short-term rentals or can be fixed by regulating short-term rentals. The activities that were described are already all illegal, and law enforcement can deal with them with existing laws and regulations. Regulations have consequences. And they will have economic consequences despite the denials. I mean, I hear that it's not all about the money. I mean, I hear that a lot from people right before they're about to empty my wallet. I believe that Sandbridge is a great place. I discovered it through a short-term rental. My wife and I purchased a place to live in because of our experience with a short-term rental, and now we own another property that we rent out, short-term rentals. So I urge you to show restraint and practice masterly inactivity on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cynthia Vassalou. And then Chris Rattling.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the time you guys are spending to hear us speak on this matter, and thank you for your patience. I won't be as masterful as the latter. I'm not as eloquent. I am his wife, if you couldn't tell. We have been a resident for six years. We love Sandbridge. The statement that the Sandbridge Civic League does not represent the owners and residents of Sandbridge is a misstatement. It maybe does not represent everybody's opinion, but I do think they try very desperately to represent the majority opinion. It is not a league just for businesses. It's a league for the resident, the community. It is a social league also. Sandbridge has been a vacation area for the past sixty-some-odd years. I apologize, I don't know the exact number. We came to there because it was a vacation area. Everybody I interact with when I say we have a place in Sandbridge goes, wow, that's a great place. Love to be there. We actually bought in a condominium. That condominium was registered with papers with the city of Virginia Beach as twenty-five percent residents and seventy-five percent vacationers. It was known when it was built, when the articles of condominiums were placed with you. It was known that it had up to two cars per unit. All of that was known at that time, which was around two thousand and seven when the things were being sold. Short-term rentals, as my husband said, we have one. My responsibility as an owner of a short-term rental is not to let it go down because I can't rent. I actually have to keep it in pristine shape because the people who are coming there want to feel like they have a better experience than what they have in their homes. And we make it very clear that there are only two cars per place. And I'm very much against the overlay that if I am grandfathered in, possibly the person I sell to can't do a short-term rental. So I'm very much against that. I'm very much against the conditional use because you limit my ability, and limiting my ability, and we want to be, the second property we bought to pay for itself, we can't afford that property without the income from the rentals. And if that income goes down, and we can't afford its value, then we won't be able to stay. And that, I think, is an important fact that we have to deal with. I really thank you for your time and wish you a good day.
Thank you for coming down.
Chris Rattling. Chris Rattling. And then Sam Reed.
We welcome you tonight.
Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I am a homeowner at Sandbridge and a longtime fan of the area. It started when I was a teenager, when we used to stay at the campground as a family, and it continued as a lifeguard at Little Island Park. And back then, it was my dream to own a home at Sandbridge. As a thirty-one-year-old man, working at Wavy TV as a photographer, making thirty-six thousand dollars a year, I somehow bought a house at Sandbridge. I have that house today. And it has been my dream to own a home at Sandbridge, and it has been my dream to retire at Sandbridge. And it is my dream to pass that home on to my kids. I think it's great that we are allowed to rent our homes. That's the only way I'm able to keep it right now. If I couldn't rent it out, I probably can't afford it. I will say this. This is what, to me, is the real reality of some of the things that we see down there. I'm very much a hands-on owner. I'm down there each weekend, and I like to meet my rentals, the people that come. They come from all around the country to come to Sandbridge. They save their money all year round to come to the beach for a week. There are families that are just like ours. And they're pretty much the same. It is a family reunion each week. And I want to share one story with you from this past summer. The family that came, came from Minnesota, Pennsylvania, and it was rented by the mother of the family. She was celebrating her ninetieth birthday that week. And that was great, and they were thrilled. But it wasn't so much that. It was the fact that her daughter, who had brain cancer, was given six months to live when she had her surgery at Duke Medical. Well, they were renting my house eight months later, and it was a family reunion. And they were able to do it at Sandbridge. They had the best week. And they are so much like all the other families that come to Sandbridge. And we see that each week. It's a great place. I am very much in favor of short-term rentals, and I'm thankful that we're allowed to do it. I don't like conditional use permits, and please use common sense when considering any new regulations. And thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Sam Reed. Sam Reed. And then Bill Brown.
Sam, we welcome you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, City Councilman, City Manager. My name is Sam Reed. I'm president of the Virginia Beach Council Civic Organizations. And we went through a process where we listened to a lot of different civic leagues that came to our meetings and came up with a position statement, which took a while because of our bylaws. So bear in mind, this doesn't reflect the new proposal coming out by the Planning Commission and all that, and the options by the city staff. Our approved, voted-on position statement is as follows. Whereas the mission of Virginia Beach Council Civic Organizations is to advocate on behalf of neighborhoods of Virginia Beach, whereas the city of Virginia Beach recognizes short-term rental, less than thirty days, continuous days, of a dwelling in a residential neighborhood as a different use of the dwelling compared to occupancy by the owner or long-term renter. As evidenced by the imposition of a transient occupancy tax on each short-term rental, whereas the city zoning ordinance is silent on short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. And whereas short-term rentals present problems for residential neighborhoods, be it resolved, the Virginia Beach Council Civic Organizations urges the city to amend the existing zoning ordinances to address short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods by holding the owner's representative or rental agency accountable for the actions of the renters. Be it also resolved that any zoning ordinance for short-term rental pursued by the city should adhere to the following. Parking, number of occupancy per bedroom- should adhere to the following: parking, number of occupancy per bedroom, rental outhouses, porta-pottings, fireworks, neighborhood disturbances, and excessive trash and trash removal. It is considered the opinion of the Virginia Beach Council Civic Organizations that these amendments and/or additions to existing zoning ordinances will promote healthy and safety of residential renters and ensure peaceful enjoyment of neighborhoods by residents and renters, and protect property and property values of residential neighborhoods to the benefit of the neighborhoods of the city as a whole. It is also the opinion of the VBCCO that these amendments will promote equality, fairness within the rental industry in holding short-term rentals to the same standards as hotels, motel industry. I'd also like to point out that only a couple of people have mentioned taxes, but the homeowner taxes in the City of Virginia Beach is about, what, 75% of your general fund budget? So the value of the homes in the neighborhoods is incredibly important to our economy in the City of Virginia Beach, and it's a fine wire that you guys have to walk and balance to make sure that those neighborhoods...
Thank you, sir. Very much for coming down. I appreciate you coming down tonight. Thank you.
And we do have a new position statement reflecting option two, and we'll bring it on the 20th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next speaker, please.
Bill Brown. And then Victor Addison.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bill Brown. I'm a 33-year resident of Sandbridge. I come tonight to support residential neighborhoods. I support a conditional use permit for new and modified short-term rentals in all residential neighborhoods. I support a CUP to ensure that rental is compatible with the neighborhood. I support a CUP to allow for citizens' input. I support one size does not fit all. I support a condition that rental houses meet the fire and safety standards based on the maximum number of occupants for the rental. I support a condition where there is adequate parking on-site for the renters. I support the protection of health, safety, and welfare of the renters and residents alike. I support the longstanding axiom that zoning is a local responsibility. I support the city retaining this responsibility and not having it abrogated by the General Assembly. I support equal protection under the law for the residents of Sandbridge. If a CUP will be required in other residential neighborhoods, it should be required in Sandbridge also. I support a level playing field for all investors in other neighborhoods who will be put at an economic disadvantage if they are required to obtain a CUP and the investors in Sandbridge are not. I support the owner be held accountable for the activity in the rental. I support a contact person be available 24/7 to respond to and remediate complaints that are reported to 311. I support the collection of these data, both complaints and responses, to objectively evaluate the problems caused by rentals going forward and how the problems are resolved. I support the occupancy standard put forward by Mr. Chip Dix, lobbyists with the Virginia Realtors Association, the federal agency HUD, the Virginia Uniform statewide building code, and the dozens of other cities that have already passed short-term rental regulations. They all support two people per bedroom as a reasonable standard. I support short-term rentals with regulations. I support a conservative approach to balance the rights of the residents and the rights of the rental operators. I support the city's proposed alternative two. In closing, I support the protection of all neighborhoods in the city. I support making Virginia Beach the greatest city in the world.
Thank you.
Thank you.[853.44][853.44](Applause).
Next speaker, please.
Victor Addison. And then after Mr. Addison will be David Watson.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Victor Addison, retired Navy captain, and I support everything that 14-year-old kid said, wherever he went.[874.12][874.12](Laughter/Applause). Seriously, I first came to Sandbridge in 1981. Prior to being stationed on my first submarine, I went to Navy guided missile school and rented a house down in Sandbridge, and I always swore, my wife and I always swore, we'd buy a place down there someday. Of course, we couldn't afford it. We had three kids, I was making patrols. But I will tell you, back in 1981, it was not a residential community then, and certainly isn't one now. It's always been a resort-type community for vacation rentals. So I'm here primarily to talk about Sandbridge. Some of the other neighborhoods in the city, you know, I agree that there's probably not a one-size-fits-all approach to that. So I kind of want to talk about my two houses that we got. We bought one in 1997, and we bought it because it was literally falling into the ocean. That's the only way we could afford it. Every other house at Sandbridge was either up for sale or dilapidated. Many were already being condemned, and it's primarily because there was no beach. There was no beach. There was, based on that, there were no renters. It was a pretty rundown-looking place, and somehow everybody came together and sorted out that problem. I bought the second one, we bought it in 1999, and we did that when we were stationed in the Persian Gulf. We had our uncle come down and check it out. It too was falling into the ocean. At high tide, there was no beach, couldn't walk your dog on the beach, the water was slapping up against bulkheads. Houses were still being condemned, the whole thing. But we had faith that people would somehow figure this out, and so my message here is I hope we all figure this out. I want to draw one parallel to what this conversation is. Back in 2005, I think this, you know, the city kind of took its eye off the ball when it came to military presence here, not in the sense they didn't appreciate it, but I think they took it for granted that it was always going to be here. And the way that happened was, the BRAC Commission was looking for targets, and all of a sudden there was a small but vocal minority that lived around the Naval Air Station, Oceana, and started, you know, they were shocked to find that there were jets there. They moved in, and they didn't know what that large space was, but they decided that it was inappropriate. They started keeping noise logs. They started, you know, basically making, you know, a lot of complaints to the head of the BRAC Commission. Fortunately, the City of Jacksonville had already moved on from Cecil Field, and we got away with it. And also, there was kind of a counterattack by everybody else in the city. It's like, wait a minute. We always loved the Naval Air Station here. We love jet noise. Same thing here. Virginia Beach without a military presence is the same thing as Virginia Beach without tourism. And I said tourism, not terrorism. It's not terrorism, it's tourism. You know, we love tourism. Oh, I have a red light. That means I got to finish.
Your time's up.
Sorry. My bottom line is here, that I think Sandbridge is a very well-run place, and I definitely don't want to have to grow strawberries to pay my taxes. You know, I'd appreciate if somehow we could work this out without any conditional use permits, three strikes throughout, or anything else.
Your time's up, sir.
David Watson. And after Mr. Watson's, Jim Moffett.
Good evening. My name is Dave Watson. I'm a resident of Virginia Beach and also own a short-term rental in Sandbridge. So obviously, I'm not against STRs. I am, however, in favor of the city's Alternative Two, which requires conditional use permits only for future STRs. All existing STRs would be grandfathered into the program. I thought Alternative Two was a good compromise solution because it doesn't affect those people who bought into residentially-zoned neighborhoods without an overlay, or those people who have already invested in rental properties. And unlike Alternative Three, it provides the city with a good tool to ensure that STRs grow in a measured way that's consistent with the comprehensive plan. You have probably heard or will hear today a continuation of the misinformation that has been spread by the local real estate businesses. To state that the city's proposed STR regulations will have a negative impact, economic impact to the city and its property owners, is a fallacy based on a belief that all regulation is bad and hurts business. There has been no legitimate economic impact analysis or data provided to suggest this will be the case. If all properties are subject to the same requirements, then the only revenues would be impacted, the only way revenues would be impacted is if regulations led vacationers to go to other destinations, which none would. At the end of the day, I hope that you were able to look beyond the unsubstantiated claims made by the business community and choose a solution that reflects the desires of residents versus the desires of the business community, whose owners and operators may or may not even be residents of the neighborhoods that are negatively impacted by the STRs. Regardless of what alternative or hybrid of alternatives you choose, your solution must include meaningful regulations. After all, it was a lack of regulation that created all of the passionate opposition to STRs that you've heard today. The regulations initially drafted by the city staff were, in general, pretty good and should not be watered down in the manner in which the Planning Commission suggested. The city's proposed occupancy limit of two persons per bedroom is considered appropriate and reasonable by almost all building and safety professionals. It's also considered reasonable in Virginia Code 36105.4, and three persons per bedroom creates unsafe occupancy levels in most houses, especially when you're thinking about emergency evacuation of guests in an unfamiliar house. My experience as an operator of a short-term rental in Sandbridge has led me to keep my occupancy limits reasonable, and I've limited my rentals to a seven-day minimum. Any of the problems I've ever had with a property, of the rental property, were when too many people were in a house or when I rented it for less than a week. The city had also recommended that STR owners have liability insurance of at least $1 million.
Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate you coming down tonight. Next speaker, please.
Jim Moffett. And after Mr. Moffett.
We welcome you tonight.
Jack Drescher.
Thank you, Jim Moffett, Sandbridge Realty. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council, for giving me the opportunity to speak. You know, it's been over two years, and we are right back here together again. Three years ago, it was just parking noise and trash for Sandbridge. It has now grown like a cancer throughout the whole city. People are afraid. After watching the last two briefings for city council, I could not find a direction that you were going with short-term rental regulations. So I still want to state the following points. We do not want conditional use permits for Sandbridge. We do not want an overlay for Sandbridge. We do not want any type of grandfathering for Sandbridge. We do want permitted use in Sandbridge for short-term rentals. We want you to vote to approve the Planning Commission recommendations with minor changes and end this, even though we don't think this is even necessary. If you find these issues in six months to a year and want to discuss changes based on facts, we are willing to sit down and adjust the ordinances to better benefit the harmony of the city. Remember, it was the city attorneys that provided the three original alternatives to the Planning Commission. We have agreed to almost everything with minor changes. Why can't you accept their findings? I leave you with a few facts. From the Commission of Revenue Office since last July, when the ordinance took place to register short-term rentals, there are only 356 properties that have registered, a far cry that they are taking over the city. From 311 Operations Department, there has not been one conviction of any ordinance since last July with these homes. From 311 Operations Department, there has not even been one complaint on any of the 356 registered homes since last July. Sandbridge, with over half the properties being rentals, has had the lowest crime rate this year for many, many years from the police department's statistics. For the Planning Commission, I provided 24 ordinances on the books already, and there was some enforcement. We'll handle almost any issue that you have with short-term rentals. We really don't need to add any more. Approve the Planning Commission revised alternative with the minor changes, and let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.[1423.13][1423.13](Applause).
Jack Drescher.
Jack, we welcome you tonight, sir.
And Pat Barton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I have the unenviable task of following young Mr. Beckett, who was outstanding in his presentation. I think if we had a draft of lawyers, we would have to go after him pretty hard.
Yep.[1443.13][1443.13](Laughter).
That's a first.[1446.63][1446.63](Laughter).
That's an understatement.
It really is an understatement. I represent the North Virginia Beach Civic League, as you know, and I presented a position I represent the North Virginia Beach Civic League, as you know, and I presented a position paper to all of you yesterday, which sets forth what we would like to see happen here. paper to all of you yesterday, which sets forth what we would like to see happen here. The options have been numerous, and I would like to explain very briefly how we arrived The options have been numerous, and I would like to explain very briefly how we arrived at the solutions that we did. at the solutions that we did. There's a balancing act here that we believe council has to achieve between individual There's a balancing act here that we believe council has to achieve between individual property rights and the preservation of our residential neighborhoods. property rights and the preservation of our residential neighborhoods. None of this would have happened, I don't think, but for the fact that we have virtual None of this would have happened, I don't think, but for the fact that we have virtual online rental platforms that have created a set of circumstances that none of us could online rental platforms that have created a set of circumstances that none of us could have envisioned some years back. have envisioned some years back. We've looked very diligently, we think, at all of the options that are available to We've looked very diligently, we think, at all of the options that are available to us, and rather than get into the option two, option one, we follow, with some exceptions, us, and rather than get into the option two, option one, we follow, with some exceptions, what the Planning Commission version has concluded. what the Planning Commission version has concluded. We think that they have made a good effort and have defined very well what home sharing We think that they have made a good effort and have defined very well what home sharing is and what short-term rentals are. is and what short-term rentals are. We think they have divided the two because they are very different, because a homeowner We think they have divided the two because they are very different, because a homeowner would be able to use his or her property as he or she chose, and an accessory rental would be able to use his or her property as he or she chose, and an accessory rental unit, if that happened to be on the property. unit, if that happened to be on the property. The registration with the Commissioner of Revenue is a no-brainer. The registration with the Commissioner of Revenue is a no-brainer. We have to be able to have a means by which to collect transient occupancy taxes. We have to be able to have a means by which to collect transient occupancy taxes. We also need a means by which to enforce proper permitting. We also need a means by which to enforce proper permitting. And if there are three adjudications within a two-year period, that makes perfect sense And if there are three adjudications within a two-year period, that makes perfect sense to me because it gives you enough of a time to basically determine whether or not you to me because it gives you enough of a time to basically determine whether or not you have a perpetual violator or someone who has just had some bad luck. have a perpetual violator or someone who has just had some bad luck. And it's not a mandatory loss of that permit. And it's not a mandatory loss of that permit. It would be permissive so that the Commissioner of Revenue's office would be allowed to have It would be permissive so that the Commissioner of Revenue's office would be allowed to have some authority to decide one way or the other whether a permit should be lifted. some authority to decide one way or the other whether a permit should be lifted. The rest of the regulations, from our viewpoint, are pretty much no-brainers. The rest of the regulations, from our viewpoint, are pretty much no-brainers. We particularly like the parking plan that would allow one parking space per bedroom We particularly like the parking plan that would allow one parking space per bedroom with the oversight being undertaken by the zoning administrator who is designated. with the oversight being undertaken by the zoning administrator who is designated. Who better to do that? Who better to do that? They understand all the lots. They understand all the lots. Lots in the North End are different than lots in Bay Colony or Thoroughgood, and they Lots in the North End are different than lots in Bay Colony or Thoroughgood, and they would understand the parking difficulties neighborhood by neighborhood. would understand the parking difficulties neighborhood by neighborhood. And if the parking plan did not meet the zoning administrator's liking, then permit And if the parking plan did not meet the zoning administrator's liking, then permit would not issue. would not issue. The no-noise, the restriction on traffic, the limitations on events, they too, in our The no-noise, the restriction on traffic, the limitations on events, they too, in our view, are pretty much self-evident. view, are pretty much self-evident. One thing we do disagree with the Planning Commission. One thing we do disagree with the Planning Commission. We feel that there should be only one rental contract per seven-day period. We feel that there should be only one rental contract per seven-day period. 52 weeks is plenty of time. 52 weeks is plenty of time. We don't want to turn this into commercial enterprise. We don't want to turn this into commercial enterprise. And lastly, the $1 million property insurance, we think is a must. And lastly, the $1 million property insurance, we think is a must. They opted for $500,000 at one time. They opted for $500,000 at one time. I see it's now $1 million. I see it's now $1 million. We think that that's very, very necessary to protect not only the property owner, but We think that that's very, very necessary to protect not only the property owner, but also the tenant as well. also the tenant as well.
Thank you so much for coming down. Thank you so much for coming down.
Pat Barton. Pat Barton.
And who's going to be after this person? And who's going to be after this person?
Catherine Miller, next. Catherine Miller, next.
We welcome you tonight. We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. City council and... City council and... Mayor, my name is Pat Barton, and I'm a third-generation Sandbridge resident. My grandmother bought there in 1957, and I'm raising my family there. I'm also a current member and past president of the Sandbridge Civic League, and a current member and past president of the Sandbridge Beach Business Association, and I'm a Realtor that's been practicing there since 2005. I did, when you guys started discussing conditional use permits, it obviously raised a red flag to me and my fellow Realtors and people that are involved in real estate in Sandbridge. So we set up a petition on sandbridgelife.com, and I have those here with me tonight, and in seven days, I have 540 signatures. Now, they are not all Virginia Beach residents, but they are stakeholders and they are taxpayers. They own real estate in Sandbridge. Conditional use permits in any form will damage the market. It'll send a message, grandfathering or not, that the city is not supporting that activity. And again, this is specific to Sandbridge. You know, the other neighborhoods, I definitely understand their concerns, you know, but this is not new. And the other thing I want to describe to you really quick is, a typical buyer that comes into Sandbridge is not, there's no profit, right? The rental income offsets the cost of ownership, and they couldn't do it without it. These are families that want to spend time there, have their families and friends there, and I truly feel that if we put these conditions, mainly the conditional use permit, grandfather or not, they will go somewhere else, like the Outer Banks. I mean, it's just too easy. Why would they want to be restricted, again, with the conditional use permit? And again, grandfathering is not the answer. Last year, we did a total with homes and condos, 57 million in sales. I think that would be cut in half if we implement any form of conditional use permits. And all these people that are coming in, they understand what our community is, and they love the lifestyle. It's all about the lifestyle. They want a piece of that lifestyle. So I got a little bit off my notes, but thanks very much for listening to me. Say no to conditional use permits, please.
Thanks for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Catherine Miller. And then after Mrs. Miller is Douglas Miller.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Miller. I live in Sandbridge. I've been coming to you and writing to you for about three years now on the topic of event houses and short-term rentals. I've talked with you, shown you pictures, served on committees in the community, met with local management companies, all in an effort to resolve these issues, and all to no avail. To this date, we've done nothing. We've all been informed by the police and by the city attorney that our ordinances concerning noise are extremely difficult to enforce as written, and yet you've not rewritten them. The ordinances concerning illegal parking seem straightforward, yet they're not enforced very often in Sandbridge because, we've been told, visitors from out of town don't pay parking tickets, so it's a waste of time to write them. Ordinances concerning trash are unknown to the renters, and the inspectors have 48 hours to respond to a call, leaving trash cans sitting out for a week with nothing being done. Yet, you've not required information concerning ordinances to be placed in rental houses. Those who claim that all we need to do is enforce existing ordinances, they must not be aware of how difficult and impossible this seems to be. My son and his family were visiting us this past weekend, and people in an event house near us partied three nights in a row, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. There were several traffic jams, illegal street parking, and a van was bringing guests in and out, in and out. And Saturday night, my guys went out for ice cream, and when they got back, my 10-year-old grandson emphatically announced to me, "I need some bleach for my eyeballs." Seems that there was a woman walking down the street from the party house who was not wearing pants, and he had seen all of her ample assets. While relaying the story, which was verified by my son and husband, people from the same house decided to set off fireworks in the 30-plus mile-an-hour windstorm we were having. My daughter-in-law saw one land on the house next door, so we watched to be sure there was no fire, and then they stopped. So now my grandson has a great story to tell his friends. Worrisome types of activities often go on when houses are rented for a weekend in the fall, in the winter, and the spring. Was there anyone I could have called? Really no. Management companies don't handle parking issues. The police wouldn't have arrived in time to see the fireworks. If we'd had a 311 number up and running with a contact person, I could have called them. City staff alternative two would grandfather the houses already used as rentals in Sandbridge, and therefore, none of them would need to get a CUP. Sorry. It would be a business as usual for them, but it also allows home sharing to continue, which would satisfy the state, what they've said to Airbnb. But however you choose or are forced to allow them, they need regulations. There are still some problems. There should be a highly visible sign in every house that tells people what to do. Come to the beach and have fun? Sure, but do it legally. And do you need music till 1:00 in the morning outside? No. So put some regulations on. If you're going to treat them like a motel, if they're going to be a motel and used as a motel, then treat them as such. Stop trying to say they're single-family houses, because it's pretty rare to see a single-family in any of them, except in the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Douglas Miller. And then Herb Jones.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Miller. I retired and moved to Sandbridge 10 years ago, and I've seen a significant change to our neighborhood in that relatively short period of time. That change began when the rental companies started heavily marketing their houses for weekend rentals during the shoulder seasons and off-seasons. At the same time, big investors started building these 10-to-14-bedroom houses that sleep up to 50 people. We now have 40 of these motels in Sandbridge, with each of them with 30 to 50 people coming and going on weekends all year long. This is not the Sandbridge that I retired to, and I would not have moved here if I had foreseen what our neighborhood was becoming. There have been actions by some to isolate Sandbridge as a special district. Why should we be treated differently from other Virginia Beach waterfront neighborhoods where rentals are also common? There are still more full-time residences and vacation homes in Sandbridge than there are rental houses. Just because the city allowed big investors to perpetrate the farce of calling their motels a single-family dwelling is no reason to punish the residents who actually live in real, single-family homes. The city needs to stop allowing these businesses from being built in our neighborhood. We also need controls on the existing ones so that they have a minimal impact on the residents. Everyone says that event homes are a problem, but in the three years since the problem was brought to the city's attention, nothing substantial has been done about it. Ninety-plus percent of the problems we've encountered from renters have been in the shoulder and off-season during weekend rentals. If you are serious about giving the residents of Sandbridge some relief, I suggest the following regulations be adopted. All right? Got four things. First, legalize a seven-day minimum. Not one rental in seven days, a seven-day minimum for STR, for short-term rentals, and I'm not talking about home sharing. Going to a seven-day minimum will get us back to families who come here for vacation to enjoy the beach, as we've heard a lot of people say, talk about the families that come, but not the large groups of people who've just come to party. Second, only allow a rental occupancy of two persons per bedroom. This is a reasonable limit for residential neighborhood that helps mitigate noise, trash, and especially parking problems. Third, if an investor chooses to have a local property manager for their rental house, make that property manageable accountable for violations of city code. Misdemeanor code violations are unenforced now, because the city won't issue summons to out-of-town owners. Finally, fully fund a functional 311 number that is active 24/7.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Herb Jones. And after Mr. Jones is Patrick Keenan.
We welcome you, sir.
Thank you. Good to be here. My name is Herb Jones, and I live at 2313 Sandpiper Road in Virginia Beach, so I expect the same rights and responsibilities as any resident in Virginia Beach, no matter where I live, but I live in Virginia Beach. Last Saturday reaffirmed that when I got my real estate assessment for the next year. And also, I'll be going later this week to pay my personal property tax in Virginia Beach, so I know I'm a resident. So I tend to listen to the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan as kind of my roadmap. And somebody already recited the first line out of that Comprehensive Plan in the section that deals with Sandbridge. I'd like to present the last one. This is the recommendation for the future. Comp Plan is dated May 16, 2016. Here's the recommendation. It is the policy of the city to retain the existing low-density neighborhood character of Sandbridge. Question, my question, end of quote, how will an overlay district make this happen? The Sandbridge Civic League has been dealing with STRs for several years. In 2015, they have formed an event house committee. It was formed, and at its July meeting, David Quitley, a builder in the area, presented the committee with an analysis of rentals in Sandbridge. At the time, he stated that there were 1,325 single-family home parcels in Sandbridge within the borders, and that 44% of them were in the weekly rental pool. Subsequent to that, in July, in June of 2016, the Sandbridge Civic League passed this motion. The Sandbridge Beach Civic League is aware of the proliferation of so-called event houses within the geographical limits of the city of Virginia Beach, particularly in the Sandbridge Beach area. It is the view of the league that the existence of event homes is a thinly disguised effort to utilize residential neighborhoods for commercial purposes contrary to existing zoning regulations and permitting processes for residential construction. According to the Sandbridge Beach Civic League at that time, they adamantly opposed the establishment of any new ordinance which would allow those kinds of homes. Some of you are saying, "Well, how do you get mixed up with event homes?" Event homes are in the minds of the person. They're not on the basis of the side. They're on the basis of what happens within them. So I would like to have you consider an alternative to grandfather all those people who are already there, using their residence as commercial ventures, at least some of them, some of the time, but require those in the future to seek permission through a conditional use permit, which will allow each of us neighbors to go to those meetings and comment.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Patrick Keenan. And after Mr. Keenan's, George Don.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Patrick Keenan. I'm the president of Sebert Realty. Ironically, I also have 540 petitions. These were signed two years ago by residents or folks who are employed by people who operate short-term rentals in Sandbridge, encouraging the City Council to be reasonable in the approach on regulation. And I appreciate that it is an extremely difficult process, but you've heard all the history. My family's been doing rentals in Sandbridge for longer than I've been alive, over 50 years. And the city has allowed it, the city has welcomed it, the city has advertised it, the city has accepted our transient occupancy tax year over year over year, and the city has largely been very pleasant and pleased with the business activity. Until recently, we've had some complaints by some neighbors. I will admit that those complaints all come to this venue only. They don't come to me. I've not received a single complaint call in my role at Sebert Realty in nearly two years on short-term rental bothering a neighbor. Naturally, I have guests who have concerns, and I've even received a call from the mayor's office indicating that only one complaint happened in the last year, and it was by a guest who was not happy with the property manager, not by a neighbor who had a problem with the guest. So I argue that we don't really have these problems that are being, I guess, insinuated that they happen. It's not a nightclub atmosphere in Sandbridge. The place is not burning down. We have many, many residents there, and my mother's one of them, is surrounded by short-term rentals, never really has a problem with people. Now, obviously, she's biased, right? I get that. But, you know, when somebody does park in her driveway, I get a phone call, "Hey, that car needs to move." Yes, ma'am, it gets done, not just because she's my mother, but because it's the right thing to do for anybody who's bothered by the short-term rental activity. It's what we always do, despite any claim of a lack of response on property manager's side, right? I can respond to those items that I'm aware of. I cannot deal with those items that don't ever come to my attention. I'm not a mind reader. Mr. Moffitt, or several people have indicated that I have been spreading false information. This council has not given us any clear direction on what they plan to do. I have a fiduciary obligation to my clients to let them know what's going on, and those issues that might affect their property values, that's my obligation to tell them about that. So until this body gives us kind of a firm direction on where they're going, we're going to assume it's the worst, and we're going to beg you not to do those items that would pretty much destroy property values in Sandbridge. Sandbridge is different than everywhere else. It should be treated differently. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Rebecca Kenlig. And then Chris Rasmur. Rebecca Kenlig.
And who's going to be after that?
Chris Rasmur.
Yeah, just one after that, too.
Okay. Michael Megg.
Thank you. We welcome you tonight.
You must get tired of seeing that.
I love sitting here. It's great.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing us. My husband and I bought our home in Sandbridge over 46 years ago, and I will add, because we couldn't find a place to rent. We love our community, surrounded by nature. We should protect it and share it. Every resident I know is fine with week-long rentals. We welcome families from all over the globe. They choose Sandbridge because we're family-friendly. We don't want to attract tourists looking for a very different type of entertainment. Turn your back on family settings, that one-week rental support, and you will see families leave with their money. No place in Virginia Beach is better suited for week-long family vacations. That's what makes us special. We need your help to maintain what has always been. The resort area also needs your support. It is zoned for short-term rentals. It has the necessary infrastructure, building codes, and regulations in place to maintain that commercial process. Sandbridge should not be changed to allow for micro-hotels. We live in our home. We have firsthand knowledge of the issues that come with revolving doors, dangerous illegal fireworks, unusual loud noise many days and nights, an abundance of overfilled trash cans, homes used for commercial purposes, illegal parking, and yes, our complaints are ignored. Keep your neighborhood a safe place for families. They deserve that at a minimum. We have great friends who rent their homes. Some of them are here tonight. They keep their eyes and ears out for their properties. They care about their neighbors. Too many absentee owners only care about their business investments. This leaves only the management companies to enforce codes and agreements. They do not. Despite the propaganda used to scare people, residents do not want to prevent the access to the beach, and we do not oppose long-term rentals, week-long. Management companies must help solve this issue. My husband and I got notice that if we didn't like what the rental companies were doing, that maybe we should leave. Really? Families want to make wonderful memories, not live through horror stories. We need help. We need support from the rental companies and their management to see that things are managed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chris Rasmur. And then Michael Megg. And after that, it'll be Charlie Kelly.
We welcome you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Rice Meyer. I'm a Virginia attorney, retired Navy flag officer, and a resident of Bay Lake Pines. We bought in Bay Lake Pines in 2009. Love the neighborhood, love the nature of the neighborhood. We ended up there because we used to live in Ocean Park. We bought in Ocean Park in 1999. Initially, the neighbors that were next door in the rental properties were wonderful neighbors, but over time, the rentals got shorter and shorter and shorter, and the nature of the people that were there became different. Eventually, it became intolerable. You cannot raise a family next to a rental like that. You can't. We had a daughter, I've got a wife, and I'm sorry, between 2:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning, it's just unpleasant to be out there having exchange with a bunch of short-term renters that aren't getting up in the morning to go to work like me, that aren't paying city taxes like I am. Yeah, indirectly they are, but they have no vested interest in the city and no vested interest in monitoring their behavior. I left that community to move to the one where I live now because of a rental like that. That all brings me to the second point. You know, one of the benefits of being late is you get to hear the wisdom of all the other speakers. What's telling is that everybody who says, "Look, what you really need is, this was some modification. All you really need is that with some degree of monitoring, so you're going to have 24/7 response. You're going to have somebody you can call. You're going to have code enforcement." Well, the nice thing about my neighborhood right now is, I don't need that. When my neighbor does something I don't like, I go, "Hey, John, can you keep it down? I got to get up in the morning." And John says, "Okay." You know what the short-term renter does? He flips you off. You end up in a confrontation with him. You call the police. By the time the police get there, it's over and done with. It's intolerable. You know, people say, "Well, you wouldn't want to live next to one of these properties? Oh, you should see what it's like?" Yeah, let me tell you, you don't want to live next to one of these properties. Now, maybe there's something magical about Sandbridge. It's great, but that's not reality. That's not the way it is in the rest of these neighborhoods. That's not who goes to short-term rentals in these other neighborhoods. It's not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Megg.
We welcome you, sir.
Charlie Kelly, and then Doug Houston.
I'm Mike Maggie, and I live along Shore Drive in the Bayfront area. Mr. Mayor, members of council, first of all, I want to thank you guys all for as much time and effort as you're putting into this. I know it's a tough situation, and we all appreciate it. I want to say that I support the planning commission recommendations, but I also come before you, if you do decide to regulate short-term rentals, that you consider allowing these short-term rentals to continue by right in the R5R and R5D zoning districts in the city. These neighborhoods have traditionally been resort, beach-oriented areas with a long history of both longer-term and short-term rentals alongside permanent residents. The city zoning code says the character of these neighborhoods include permanent year-round residents as well as seasonal rentals. Like Sandbridge, the residents of these neighborhoods have historically lived alongside short-term seasonal rentals with little to no issue.
Thank you.
Michael Megg.
We welcome you, sir.
Charlie Kelly, and then Doug Houston.
I'm Mike Maggie, and I live along Shore Drive in the Bayfront area. Mr. Mayor, members of council, first of all, I want to thank you guys all for as much time and effort as you're putting into this. I know it's a tough situation, and we all appreciate it. I want to say that I support the Planning Commission recommendations, but I also come before you, if you do decide to regulate short-term rentals, that you consider allowing these short-term rentals to continue by right in the R-5R and R-5D zoning districts in the city. These neighborhoods have traditionally been resort, beach-oriented areas with a long history of both longer-term and short-term rentals alongside permanent residents. The city zoning code says the character of these neighborhoods include permanent year-round residents as well as seasonal rentals. Like Sandbridge, the residents of these neighborhoods have historically lived alongside short-term seasonal rentals with little to no issue. I believe a fair compromise while limiting STRs from the more traditional neighborhoods and allowing them to continue to be part of the neighborhoods that have always been part of those communities. If you go to any of the bay or oceanfront beach neighborhoods during the summer or vacation months, you're going to see cars parked all over the place, people going to the beach, having parties in their yards, and just enjoying the area. This is one of the major reasons Virginia Beach is such a highly regarded vacation destination. Let's not limit that by over-regulating use that has been allowed for over 60 years. The other very important issue I wanted to address, since this is a zoning and land use issue, is once council does come up with a decision or acts, is ensuring whether these STRs are grandfathered, allowed by right, with a conditional use permit or an overlay district, that that right will run with the land and not just the current register owner. This will protect the value of the land, the tax assessment, as well as the current property owner's rights, whether he or she decides to sell that property or keep it in the future. Again, laws and codes already exist to help regulate this use, and since it has been historically allowed, these codes, if properly enforced, will allow owners the ability to use their land in the highest and best use while not infringing on others to enjoy their homes. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you for coming down.
Charlie Kelly, Doug Houston, and then Bruce Johnson.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. I've sat here for several hours now, and I've revised what I wanted to say many times. And so I'm just going to have a stream of consciousness here, so hopefully it will make some sense to you. In 2000, my wife and I purchased the property in Sandbridge. We purchased it as a short-term rental. Within six months, my wife announced, we should move here full-time. We bought a house, 11 houses down the street. We maintained the short-term rental, which we have to this day, and we have become very involved in the community. I'm a member of the trustee on the Sandbridge Community Chapel. I'm a member of the Civic League Board, treasurer of the Sandbridge Beach Business Association, president of the Sandbridge Tennis Association, and several other volunteer associations in Sandbridge. I would like to talk about what Herb Jones read as a position of the Civic Association. That was voted upon by the Civic League. At that point in time, the Civic League was in an ambush mentality. All right, let's all get together and show up tonight and stack the house and vote for something that we support. And the rest of the community had no idea what was coming down. I proposed, and it's now referred to as the Charlie Kelly Rule, my name gets mentioned a lot, that states if you have a major issue that affects property rights that you want to present and vote on at the Sandbridge Civic League, it has to be presented a month ahead of time, has to be advertised in the Civic League newsletter, and a date for the vote posted. And that's the reason we have not been able to vote as the Civic League on this moving target, because quite frankly, from one week to the other, we weren't sure what was happening. We thought we had the Planning Commission version coming on, and that now has gotten thrown out, or is one of four alternatives. So I'm not sure where we stand there. Earlier in the week, it seemed like there were some of you who were working with Barry Knight to come up with a solution for Sandbridge and not upset the rest of the city. And we've heard that it's not apples and apples, it's apples and oranges. And we need to protect the apples and the oranges. And that's what I asked you to do, protect both of these fruits.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Doug Houston. Doug Houston, Bruce Johnson, and then Emily Palmer.
We welcome you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Doug Houston. I'm an owner of a 10-year short-term rental in Ocean Park. My involvement with short-term rentals goes back to the mid-'70s with a family home on Wake Forest Street in Cape Story. I appreciate the time that council has spent reviewing this issue over the last couple of years. I actually watched a council session recently where I believe Ms. Henley said she's got 1,000 hours in reading some of these documents, and I know it's a complicated issue, and I appreciate it. I have also followed this issue intently. I attended and spoke before City Council in November and again at the Planning Commission meeting here in December. It seems like what started with a desire to collect proper transient taxes and deal with legitimate problems associated with event houses in Sandbridge has now morphed into possibly requiring overlay districts and/or conditional use permits for the entire city. It really feels like a regulation looking for a problem. I appreciate the grandfathering concept as it will protect my current property. However, this concept insinuates that what has been allowed in the past is wrong by drawing a deadline at which the new short-term rentals would not exist. I have heard some of the opposition speakers make comments about not wanting those people living next to me. My experience is that those people are attorneys, professors, nurses, veterans, teachers, firefighters, and business owners. I even rented my house to a two-star admiral that really appreciated some R&amp;R after his tour in Baghdad. I have enjoyed meeting some of the nicest people over the last decade of being a short-term rental landlord. I have never had an issue that caused for me to respond to an issue at my house, much less in under an hour. Outside of the immediate neighbors, I doubt the remainder of the neighborhood even knows that my home is used for a short-term rental. I realize there are bad apples in any situation, but whether a landlord rents to someone for two weeks or 12 months does not change that. However, creating overlay districts and/or CUPs is way overkill for just a handful of issues outside of the Sandbridge event housing. I respectfully request that City Council follow the recommendations of the Planning Commission and avoids onerous overregulation via the overlay districts and/or CUPs. The requirement for a limit of two rental contracts in a seven-day period and proper liability insurance achieves a balance based on the feedback from all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bruce Johnson. After Mr. Johnson's, Emily Palmer, and then Lynn Hume.
We welcome you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I'm going to shock you, I don't live in Sandbridge. I live in Chesapeake Beach. When my wife and I bought our house in Chesapeake Beach, we bought in a residential neighborhood. We live in a duplex. That means one neighbor is a foot away, and my other neighbor is 10 feet away. So if you don't use a conditional use permit to regulate these short-term and home-sharing rentals, I could come home one day and not even know it, and there's a short-term rental established next door to me. 10 feet away is not a good distance. We've already had one short-term rental in our neighborhood in single-family houses, and that caused havoc in our neighborhood and causes a lot of problems at that. Enforcement, there's been talk about enforcement, about the police and that. Well, if they don't run any summons and don't write a report, how is it going to be enforced? The 3-1-1 would be good and that, but if no summonses are written, then how are you going to adjudicate this? Okay, with this, you know, you've seen that one size isn't going to fit all in the whole city. What's good for Sandbridge, what's good for other places, isn't going to be good for Chesapeake Beach, not Kempsville, not Carland Farms, no Greenback, Great Neck Road neighborhoods. So please, when you think of this, look at how you're going to preserve the neighborhood tranquility and the peace and quiet that respect the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Emily Palmer. Lynn Hume and Brad Hall.
We welcome you tonight.
I know it's been a long evening, and everyone's tired, but members of the City Council, and Mayor, and everyone. I live in Sandbridge. I bought my house 33 years ago. And when I bought our home, when we bought our home, my husband and I, all the homes around us were rental properties. We knew that going in. My closest neighbor was four houses away, and in Sandbridge, that's pretty far. Today, my closest neighbor is five houses away. All the other houses are rental homes. So I do understand what we're talking about here today. I am opposed to many of the new proposed regulations that you're putting forth with because we have so many of them already covered on the books that are not being enforced. And in putting in a whole set of new ordinances, how are they going to be enforced if we can't enforce the ones we already have that pertain to duplicity of what we already have? So I wanted to bring that to your attention. I think a lot of these regulations that you're putting forth discriminate against the homeowners who rent their homes part of the year, or some who rent their properties all year long, versus all the other homeowners in the same neighborhood. You're actually discriminating one sector of the community and enforcing and putting in regulations that just target that one segment. I want to bring to your attention in Florida what has happened there in a community very similar to ours that do short-term rentals. Florida has a tremendous amount of rental properties that contribute a huge portion to their economic growth. In 2015, the Flagler County Commissioners set forth ordinances that applied to short-term rentals in their... am I finished already?
You have 20 seconds.
Oh. Well, anyway, there was a lawsuit for 22.7 million. They just settled it in January with 75 short-term owners. And they're putting up a bill that's going to go back to 2011 and take away all of the ordinances that happened before now. And they're going to propose this that's going to go through the system. It's already been approved by the House.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
Lynn Hume. Then Brad Hall and Michael Davis.
We welcome you.
Hello, I'm Lynn Hume, and I'm a homeowner, investor, and a realtor since 1984 in the Bay Area. The controversy about event homes in Sandbridge has spilled over to all the parts of the city. To Sandbridge's benefit, with the General Assembly Bill perhaps, it appears they will be allowed to keep their short-term use and would be economically devastating otherwise. I attended all the Planning Commission workshops and formal hearings in support of their recommendations. However, property owners along the Bay Area are in danger of losing their ability to offer short-term rentals, a unique area described in R-5R zoning as having permanent and seasonal rentals. Why would short-term rentals in this beach area be restricted? With First Landing State Park, Nature Trails, the Lynn Haven Waterways, fishing charters, the Lighthouse, the Brock Environmental Center, yes, we're in a resort area, too. With a few exceptions, such as Bay Lake Pines zoned R-10, where is the huge public outcry from the rest of the beach areas? Most of us know the usual attendance at Civic Leagues. One or two speakers talking about a hammock in a front yard and parking problems is not a reason to change a whole area's rights. Remember the low-rent Regatta Park crowds? Look at the paddleboard races today. Everyone should be able to enjoy the beach life. Have you been to the beach on the 4th of July or weekends? Oh, my gosh. Cars are stacked everywhere. Music's blaring. This is not a planned unit development. Most Bay Area Civic Leagues do not have a consensus to end short-term rentals. Staff asked Bayfront Civic Leagues for a statement. Many did not respond. Some people have taken the opportunity to piggyback on another area's problems. Loud music and parties are in long-term rentals in owner-occupied homes. This historical use shouldn't be restricted, then granted permission later by an overlay district or conditional use permit, putting the cart before the horse. If a neighborhood wants to restrict short-term rentals, then they should petition council to not have them. The Planning Commission got this right. Staff saying that they are illegal after 60 years is unreasonable. They're in use, taxes are collected. Staff's suggestion to grant fire prior to council vote is completely unreasonable. The ODU report to the Virginia Beach says, "The notion that the meteoric growth of Airbnb-like hosts can be choked off by punitive law enforcement is naive, nor should would this be a good idea. Arbitrary restrictions should not be placed to try to control a certain outcome or directed to a certain business area or individual to succeed. Please accept the Planning Commission's recommendations." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Brad Hall. After Mr. Hall, Michael Davis, and then Gene Davis.
What's going on? My name is Brad Hall. I work at the Chrysler Museum, and I'm an Old Beach resident. I own my own home, and I am the boogeyman. I am the one that goes and rents Airbnbs. I'm more comfortable in an Airbnb than I am a hotel. It's just how I am. Airbnb has a system, a review system. Five-star reviews, I only stay with five-star reviews. It's capitalism. You have less than five-star reviews, you're a business. You go out of business. You screw up, you go out of business. Plain and simple. I know people like to say that young people are doing stupid things and trendy things, but a lot of us, we want to make the world a better place. We want to achieve. We want to strive. My girlfriend, she works for the Mocha. We work for nonprofits. We're trying to make ends meet. I'm debating on doing it at my house. She's done it at her house for the last three years. She was ranked number three with five-star reviews. Killing it, just flat-out killing it. And you know how the reason, the difference is, a hotel or a long-term rental, it's personal. We go there. We go to Airbnbs. We go to one in Chattanooga. We find what the locals do. We understand what the locals do. We don't want to be an average tourist. A lot of us in Old Beach, we're starting to feel like we're second standard citizens. We're just, when are we going to be able to actually have a voice? It just seems like a lot of this has been put on tourists. We're a different breed. There is a market for this, for people that don't like hotels. What I wanted to say about this was, I've debated on doing this with my house, with actually the house share. And to me, the house share is not the same animal as a five-day rental or a three-day rental of a house. So the two-limit a week just doesn't make sense. Now, I'm there. I got to get up at 8:00. I got to be at work at 8:00. There's no nonsense in my house. Ask my girlfriend. She can't even touch my mail. You know, like, so basically, basically, like, we have control. And to me, basically, having a house share being treated as, let's say, like, a week-long rental where somebody's not there, you know, it doesn't make sense. A lot of these people, like, I've heard military people coming in, families, they're doing quick trips to the convention center. These are people coming for work. This is not your average tourist. This is capitalism. This is a market. And to me, it just doesn't, it doesn't meet the return if I'm only allowed to, if they stay one night. And that's all I have to say. Sorry, I got a little passionate. It's the first time I've ever done this, and I don't like to be making fun of people.
We enjoy your comments. Thank you.
A little touch of mail.
Next speaker, please. We welcome you.
Michael Davis.
Nice to see you tonight.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I endorse what a gentleman said here earlier, and that is that we go for option four. And option four would be that we do little or nothing about this. And the reason I say that is, I think a lot of these regulations have not been well thought out. And I want to give you one example, since I only have three minutes. And that is, after the Planning Commission delivered their recommendations to you, I noticed in the very first workshop that you had after that, Ms. Henley reintroduced putting fire eggs at signs in homes. And so I did a little research on that, checked with the OSHA regulations and their statistics. I checked with United States Consumer Safety Commission and 18 other sources. Now, I'm not saying that's an exhaustive list, but I did some pretty extensive research on it. Can anyone tell me here how many times there has been an injury or a death in a private residence, whether rented or not rented, due to no-exit sign in the house? Can anybody tell me that? In the entire history of the United States, there have been none. In the entire history of the United States, there have been none, not one. So why do we need exit signs in a private residence? That's just one example I want to give you of how these things have not been properly thought out. They need to be considered, they're very draconian in nature, and we don't need most of these. I think what the solution to the problem here is, and I've listened to everyone here tonight, and I agree with the gentleman who said, "We're not living in Mogadishu." These issues are not what they've been made out to be. I live in Sandbridge. I've lived there for ten years, and I'm not seeing all these problems that people are getting up here and talking about. And I'm there day in and day out and have rentals on both sides of me. What I think the solution to this problem is, is not further regulations. Ms. Pettigrew got up here and made a point of talking about a homicide that happened in a bed and breakfast, I'm sorry, in an Airbnb back in 2016. And she said, "The way to stop this is with regulations." As far as I know, there was a regulation against murder back in 2016, and it didn't stop that. So regulations can't stop everything. I'll tell you what will stop things, is the same thing that has stopped it for sixty-five years, and that is the residents out here who care about these properties and take care of them, and the rental agencies that do the same, and that will continue for the next sixty-five years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gene Davis. And after Mrs. Davis, Jim Reeve, and then Kevin Sheffield.
We welcome you.
Hi. Nice to see you all again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and anyone I may have forgotten. I saw you in November in 2016. Here we are again. I am against the CUPs. Sandbridge is a wonderful neighborhood, but it is not your standard neighborhood community. It's been a vacation, rental home, family, community. It's been doing that for years. Why now, all of a sudden, we're having all this talk? Like Mr. Davis said, I live there. I work every day. It's not Sodom and Gomorrah. You know, this, all this stuff you hear is not going on. Neighbors look out for neighbors. We enjoy our renters. You know, it's a beach community. If you don't like the heat, then you shouldn't have moved to the desert. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jim Reeve. Jim Reeve. Kevin Sheffield. And then Nicholas Naylor.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
What a nice evening. Those might government in action. My name is Jim Reeve. I live in the Princess Anne District. I'm not here to tell you what to do. I'm not here to tell you what option to pick. I firmly believe that the honest brokers up on your dais tonight will find a solution that meets the vast majority of the needs of the city. We have been working on this for three years. We had many opportunities to get it solved, but we're here still tonight. I want to apologize. I want to apologize to people of Bay Lake Pines. I want to apologize to some of these other neighborhoods that feel the boogeyman of rental homes is coming to them. That is why this got spun up. This started as a Sandbridge issue. This should end as a Sandbridge issue. It is so unfortunate that the leadership of Princess Anne, Ms. Henley, has allowed this to go on without clear and concise direction, and that it only fuels speculation, distrust, and makes this council in a very untenable circumstance. How do you split the baby? We split the baby because, as you said tonight, there are apples and there are oranges. And I believe this council understands that. You've heard it tonight. I think many of you have known it in the past. The only reason the state got involved is they did not believe that District Representative Ms. Henley would do the right thing for Sandbridge, and he decided to stand up for it. If you don't mind, sir, I mean, I only want three minutes. I believe everyone should be an honest broker. I believe the truth should come out, and I believe we need clear and concise direction from our, our representatives, because the rest of you have been brought into this. You should be brought into this. Bay Lake Pines, I feel so sorry for them. They don't deserve this. This is never meant to be for anyone else but Sandbridge. But it wasn't good enough, so it kept getting spun up and spun up and spun up, and here we are tonight. So I hope in the next couple of weeks, this council will find a way to support the vast majority of residents in the city, whether it be neighborhoods that have been historically neighborhoods, or whether it be places like Sandbridge and the Oceanfront that have been historically resort communities. And we find rules and regulations that are tenable and forcible and not overbearing. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Kevin Sheffield. Nicholas Naylor. And then Cory Belcher.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Evening, Council. My name is Kevin Sheffield. I'm a resident down at the south end of the Oceanfront, and I've been stationed here for four years now. I am buying my house as a rental property. I bought it as a residence, but due to my travel schedule and my training workup cycles, I've been forced to be away from it, and using these ORPs have been a great asset and a great tool for me. So my main concern is that we overregulate these and strip homeowners from the tools that they have as an asset. So for instance, with a lot of these ORPs, not only do they get to rate my property, I could rate them as a guest. So I can go and do my due diligence and determine who and who I wish to not let into my house. So, you know, I think it's a vital tool for me in terms of, you know, we're a third-party agency, a property manager, when do that due diligence, they don't care about anything other than the bottom line, and they're not as concerned about my property as I am. They don't have to live next to my neighbors when they come back, and I just feel it's a concern into a lot of the ideas that come out in terms of overregulating it. For instance, thirty minutes to be on-site, it took me thirty minutes to get here today, over thirty minutes to get here today, and I live in Virginia Beach. You know, a three-strikes rule, that's also forcing us to go to a, a property manager because if they get three strikes, then I just drop them and get another property manager. So it's offsetting the, the liability on myself. So I just think we should be very wary in terms of the rights and, and frigid on, like, the tools that property owners have and what they're available to use. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Nicholas Naylor. Cory Belcher. And then Nancy Parker.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. And I'll try and spare you and be relatively brief here. I think there's, it should be obvious to us all at this point that the issue in Sandbridge is different from the issue in the rest of the greater city of Virginia Beach. In Sandbridge, rentals are the status quo, they always have been, whereas the rest of the city, this represents a change in their status quo, which is what makes them scared, and I understand that. It seems that the, that the overlay is an attempt to address that. I think it's pretty new, and the concern is that maybe we don't all understand what other ramifications there may be from having an overlay, but it seems like a start. It's a recognition that Sandbridge is unique and different. I've owned my house for ten years in Sandbridge, and we do rent, and it was a double-wide on stilts when we bought it. And now, it's a, it's completely renovated from top to bottom. It's a virtuous cycle from the rental income that we get, and it's good for everybody. It's good for the city. It's good for me. It's good for my neighbors. It's good for everybody. My concern with the second solution is that if you grandfather me, it doesn't really matter. If I go to sell my property, you're not affording that person the same right to continue that virtuous cycle, and that's a problem. You are giving them a, you're opening a Pandora's Box with the conditional use permit of bureaucratic regulations that, that I think are, are going to definitely have an effect on people to continue to support the neighborhood and support the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cory Belcher. And then Nancy Parker. And Anders Hellstrom.
We welcome you tonight.
Hello. My name is Cory Belcher, and I'm one of the many people who work for, work in Sandbridge for a realty company. I'm speaking today because this affects my livelihood and my future. My family has owned property in Sandbridge since the 1960s. However, I was raised two hours away in Chesterfield, Virginia. While attending college at Virginia Commonwealth University, I had the opportunity to intern with Seibert Realty. I have now been employed by them for nearly seven years. I've also since bought a home just outside of Sandbridge. One of the many benefits of short-term rentals for the city, aside from the enormous tax revenues, is that educated young adults are drawn to the area for job opportunities in real estate and property management. In addition to myself, Seibert has also had interns from Longwood, Washington &amp; Lee, James Madison, as well as other notable universities. If the short-term rental ordinances go through, it will undoubtedly change our business model at Seibert Realty. Had these ordinances been in place in 2011, I may not have had the opportunity to get a job here, move to Virginia Beach, and start my life as a young adult here. In closing, I want to thank you for your time today and listening to everyone. I pray that we can figure out a way to keep the peace without tanking property values or crippling the rental companies in our area who have been in business for decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Nancy Parker. Nancy Parker. Anders Hellstrom.
Anderson, we welcome you.
I'm glad you all stayed. I know you are too. Good evening, Mayor, members of Council and staff. My name is Nancy Parker, and I'm a fifty-year resident of the Beach Borough District. I am the Vice President of the Resort District, and I'm representing the organization as our President Brad Capps had a prior commitment. The Resort Beach Civic League has spent numerous occasions to discuss the short-term rental issues. At the Planning Commission, at the Planning Commission, a short-term renter who attended only one of our meetings made an untrue statement that our membership did not vote in support of the conditional use permit. Last night at our March 6 meeting, the membership voted to reconfirm our position on short-term rentals and the conditions as set forth. We supported the conditional use permit process. No event houses in the Oceanfront Resort District, that includes the Old Beach, Lakewood, and the Pinewood neighborhoods. They did support a maximum of two rentals per seven days. Business license required. Registration as a short-term rental required. Parking on-site with no temporary RPP parking passes in the Old Beach, Lakewood, Pinewood, and Resort Beach neighborhoods. Parking is a serious issue for us down there without this additional burden. Fire inspections. Collection of lodging taxes. No noise after 10:00 PM, and as we've heard, that's going to be a very difficult one because what does that mean to certain people? Agent to be on property within thirty minutes of complaint calls. No signs except for the one-foot-by-one-foot sign to identify the property. And a $10,000 fine for not being registered per violation, and home sharing does not apply to these rules. Additionally, the Resort Beach Civic League took the opportunity to support Mayor Jones's resolution, I'm not sure where it is right now, but it was in opposition to House Bill 824. We saw that as a violation of the, the city's opportunity to be able to regulate land use issues. The loss of the conditional use permit in this specific instance is something that all of us should be very concerned about because that lies in the face of what you all's opportunities are. And we had to respectfully disagree, even though we appreciate the work that those folks, Barry Knight, Senator Bill Distefano, and Tom Norton have done in the past, but we do respectfully disagree with them on this particular issue. I want to thank you again for protecting the neighborhoods at your Oceanfront as well as the other neighborhoods throughout the city, and I will be sending you my own personal comments later via email. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to see you. Next speaker, please.
Anders Hellstrom. And then the next speaker will be Nicholas Kleaenthes.
We welcome you, sir.
Anders Hellstrom. I'm almost a lifetime resident and homeowner out in Virginia Beach. I have a house in Sandbridge, grew up out there, have a house in Kempsville. We've heard a couple of people speak of how scared they are of short-term rentals. Well, I'm in a kind of a unique situation. I have a house that I treat as a short-term rental. We spend time there, a little more time in the wintertime than the summer. But we also had a house recently in my Kempsville neighborhood that was turned into a short-term rental. And I can tell you, the majority, the vast majority of renters do not mistreat property. They don't come in trying to create havoc here in Virginia Beach. They're coming to have a good time, to relax, you know, and enjoy the amenities that we have in the city and that we try to promote. I don't think any of us would be here right now, to be honest with you, if it hadn't been for Darren Campbell getting shot. It's a horrible thing that happened. It's a horrible set of circumstances. I think we can all agree on that. I feel like there are regulations in place to stop that type of behavior back then, and there are today. And the fact that we're turning this into this big affair, that we're trying to put a bunch of new regulations where we can't even manage the regulations we have on the books today, is, you know, gone way too far. You know, I'm firmly in the camp of no new regulation. You know, if we're having a hard time supporting our police personnel getting these troublemakers off the street, well, let's change our laws. You know, whatever we have on the books for people that are creating a lot of noise and we're just worried about issuing a summons, well, let's start taking people to jail. Let's hang out there for ten or twenty minutes and make sure they clean their act up. You know, I think we, I think we need to, you know, get away from this big morass. Every time I turn around, it's a new set of regulations and a new set of ideas, and you know, they're turning around now. You know, I just feel like we've got enough, enough of that going on. Let's, let's make what we've got on the books tougher, and let's start to enforce them, and let's support our police personnel to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The last speaker is Nicholas Kleaenthes, K-L-E-A-N-T-H-E-S.
Nicholas, what, huh?
I think I saw him leave.
Do you want to repeat your name one more time?
Nicholas, I'm sorry, I don't know how to say his last name.
Okay. Well, we thank everyone for their comments, and we look forward to taking it all in and putting it to good use. I'll now, is there any unfinished business?
Mr. Mayor. We have prepared the, the statement concerning our executive session, and it's ready for council review. Not sure you want to handle it at the dais or reconvene in executive session in the back.
Okay, we should go in closed session.
Okay.
But, but...
This is open mic, no.
Excuse me? We got open mic too. Why don't we do open mic before we go?
Yep.
I can adjourn this meeting. How do I go on to open mic without closing speakers? We got to go into closed session.
Can't we just make another motion to go into executive session? I think you just make another motion to go into executive session.
Okay, is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? We'll adjourn this, will you?